Man, Deputy Clerk, we're reporting at a closed session of two items. First item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on closed session agenda tonight. The motion is that the closed session report number PDS 25062 be received and the confidential direction to staff be confirmed.
Someone like to move that? Councilor Gillan, secondar, Councilor Kim. Comments, questions? Court of vote?
Record of vote has been called for item 4.1 for the closed session agenda. Mayor Morakas had a vote.
Yes.
Councilor Gallo. Councilor Gallo votes no. Council Wees. Council Wees votes no. Council Gillan. Council Gillan votes yes. Council Gardner. Council Gardner votes yes. Council Kim. Council Kim votes yes. Council Thompson. Council Thompson votes yes. Motion carries.
Second item?
Second item on the agenda, on the closed session agenda. The motion is to closed session report number CMS 25019 be received and the confidential direction to staff be confirmed.
Okay, someone like to move that? Councilor Gallo. Council Thompson. Any comments, questions? Court of vote?
Record of vote has been called for item 4.2 on the closed session report. Mayor Morakas had a vote.
Yes.
Council Wees. Council Wees votes yes. Council Kim. Council Kim votes yes. Council Thompson. Council Thompson votes yes. Council Gardner. Council Gardner votes yes. Council Gallo. Council Gallo votes yes. Council Gillan. Council Gillan votes yes. Motion carries.
You confirmed by law. Someone like to move that? Council Gardner. Council Wees. All those in favor? Oh, is that carries? Motion adjourned. So Thompson, Council Kim, all those in favor? Oh, is that carries? Deputy Clerk, time is 7:02. I'm going to call this committee a whole meeting to order. Town of Aurora acknowledges that the Inishinaabe lands on which we live and work are the traditional and treaty territory of the Chipewas of Georgina Island, as well as many other nations whose presence here continues to this day. As the closest First Nation community to Aurora, we recognize the special relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and as a municipality, we join them in these responsibilities. We further acknowledge that Aurora is part of the treaty lands of the Mississaugas and Chipewas, recognized through Treaty Number 13, as well as the Williams Treaties of 1923. A shared understanding of the rich cultural heritage that has existed for centuries and how our collective past has brought us to where we are today will help us walk together into a better future. Counsel, I have two separate votes for add-ons that I need. One is for the for the two added additional delegations. So I need a mover and a secondar and two-thirds to add two extra delegations. Moved by Council Wees, seconded. Council Kim. All those in favor? Post. That carries. The second one is to add the motion by Council Kim. I'm assuming you want to move that? Is there a secondar to adding that? Still got a vote on it? Unless an additional secondar. Council Thompson? Council Gardner, did you want to say something?
Yes. On the most current agenda that I saw, there was a delegation still from Christopher Harris. Yes, it should be noted that he notified somebody at the town that he was not going to make the delegation. He he should have come to the traffic safety. Sorry. Oh, your attendance!
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll go forward with that then.
Well, we have had a communication glitch.
All right.
Thank you.
So I'll go back to Council Kim because I know he. So we have, on the floor right now, we have to the added motion by Council Kim. Council Kim, did she want me to call a vote? Okay, call a vote. All those in favor? Post. That carries. Okay, back to the main motion of the approval of the agenda with the added items. Can I get someone to move that? Council Thompson, seconded by Council Kim. Any comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor? Post that carries. Any declarations of community interest? Seeing none. Move to community presentations. We have one. First one is Javid Khan, President and Chair, and Melanie Pearson, Chair, Induction Committee Regarding the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame Class 2025 inductees. Javid Khan, welcome. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Morakas, members of council, staff, honored members, ladies and gentlemen, and our viewers on YouTube. For those who haven't yet had the pleasure of meeting me, my name is Javid Khan. My family and I have, well, you don't know. My family and I have proudly called Aurora home for the past 21 years, and I've been a passionate volunteer in our community throughout that time. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm absolutely excited to be back in these council chambers for another year as President and Chair of the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame. For those who don't know, the organization was founded in 2013. The Aurora Sports Hall of Fame is a volunteer-led organization that honors athletes, coaches, builders, and now media and teens who shaped Aurora's sports legacy. With over 50 inductees and a growing roster of over 50 volunteers, we celebrate excellence, leadership, and positive community impact. The annual induction celebration evening is hosted the first week of November and is the highlight of our community's event calendar. While partially supported by the municipality, the majority of the organization's financial support is from local fundraising and grants. Through exhibits and constant community outreach, we continue to work to build Aurora O N pride across generations. Tonight is a truly special evening for our community. Together, we celebrate the incredible achievements of some extraordinary individuals, people whose dedication, talent, and love for sport have not only shaped their own journeys, but have also brought immense pride to the town of Aurora. Their accomplishments have echoed far beyond our borders, and it's our honor to recognize and very briefly share their stories with you tonight. Over time, it has become a tradition, a part of our process, to reveal the next class of inductees in front of Aurora Town Council. This act symbolizes our respect and demonstrates the strong partnership we share with the municipality, especially with its staff and community representatives in front of me. Now, it's my great pleasure to introduce someone whose leadership and commitment have been essential to making this evening possible. Please join me in welcoming Melanie Pearson, Chair of the Induction Committee, whose hard work, along with her exceptional team of volunteers and members of the selection panel, have made tonight's celebration a reality.
Good evening. Thank you, Javid, for the introduction. Before we announce the inductees, I would like to extend a huge thank you to all of our volunteers who contributed to this selection process. Our selection panelists, members of the induction committee, Javid and the nominations committee, as well as all of the nominators who dedicated their time to preparing the nomination packages. The Aurora Sports Hall of Fame is so fortunate to be able to have such incredible volunteers in the community, and for that, we are truly grateful. Now, with great pride, it is my pleasure to introduce the 2025 inductees into the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame. In no particular order, our first inductee is Erlinda Beyonddick for the category of athlete in running. Proving that it's never too late to chase greatness, Erlinda began her running career at the age of 75. Since then, she has become a global inspiration, shattering expectations, and world records. In a grueling six-day endurance race in Augusta, Georgia, she became the oldest woman to compete in both the 50-mile and 100-mile categories, covering an astonishing in those categories, she covered an astonishing 403 kilometers in 144 hours and breaking the women's 80-plus world record. Her spirit and determination earned her the prestigious Hans Meyer Trophy for Most Inspiring Runner in 2016. But Erlinda's commitment goes beyond the race course. A dedicated community volunteer, she has served at the Aurora Senior Center for Open Skates, and together with her husband George, she undertook a walk from Aurora to Berry, raising more than $16,000 for the Aurora Food Pantry. Erlinda is living proof that passion, purpose, and perseverance know no age limits. Congratulations again, Erlinda. Our next inductee is Chris King for the category of athlete in hockey. Chris is unable to join us this evening as he is involved in the ongoing planning of the Stanley Cup playoffs, but he is represented tonight by his daughter Danielle. Chris's legacy in the National Hockey League spans 14 seasons with six teams, including Detroit, New York, Winnipeg, Phoenix, Toronto, and Chicago. He is known not only for his grit and tenacity on the ice, but also for his leadership and integrity. Chris was widely respected by teammates, coaches, and fans for his positive character, infectious energy, and loyal commitment to the team. His presence in the locker room consistently reflected a selfless, team-first attitude and a passion for uplifting those around him. Today, Chris continues to influence the game as Senior Vice President of Operations at NHL's Toronto head office. Off the ice, his dedication to community service is just as impactful. He has served as honorary chairman for the Ronald McDonald House and lends his time to countless charitable events each year. His philanthropic leadership extends to multiple nonprofit boards, and he has played a key role in launching a summer camp for children and families of emergency service and military personnel who have lost loved ones in the line of duty. His legacy is one of excellence, leadership, and compassion on and off the ice. So we send our congratulations to Chris. Our third inductee for the evening is Heather Mourning for the category of coach in hockey. For more than 30 years, Heather has been a driving force behind the growth of hockey, particularly women's hockey, at local, provincial, and national levels. A proud Aurora resident for over two decades, Heather has coached and mentored athletes through programs such as the Aurora Panthers and Aurora Tigers, where she has served as a respected skills and development coach. In 1999, she organized Team Ontario U17 Evaluation Camp for the Canada Winter Games, helping to shape the future of Canadian hockey talent. She has also served on the Board of Directors for the Central York Girls Hockey Association, advocating tirelessly for expanded opportunities in the sport. As co-founder of the innovative Never Too Late Hockey Program, Heather has opened doors for women who want to embrace the game later in life, proving that hockey truly is for everyone. She's widely recognized across York region. Heather is a passionate coach, a visionary leader, and a champion for inclusivity in the sport. Congratulations, Heather. And last, but certainly not least, our fourth inductee for the evening is Robert Reed for the category of athlete in football. Explosive speed, relentless drive, and unmatched athleticism. Robert brought all this and more to the Canadian Football League when he was selected ninth overall in the first round of the 1984 draft. During his professional career with the Saskatchewan Roughriders and the Ottawa Roughriders, he quickly learned, earned a reputation as one of the most dynamic running backs in the league, respected for his powerful play and outstanding work ethic. After retiring from professional football, Reed turned his passion for performance into a meaningful career in personal training. Today, he motivates clients to embrace healthier, more active lives with a be rooted in mental resilience, personal discipline, and physical strength. Beyond the gym, he continues to lead by example, coaching youth basketball and mentoring the next generation of athletes. Whether on the field, in the community, or in the lives he touches every day, Robert embodies excellence, purpose, and perseverance. Congratulations, Robert. Congratulations again to all four of our incredible inductees, and I will pass it back over to Javid for some closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie. Congratulations to Erlinda Beyonddick, Chris King, Danielle on his behalf, Heather Mourning, and Robert Reed of your inductions into the Aurora Sports Hall of Fame. I invite everyone in this room, members of council, staff, to join Melanie and I and their families and friends of our inductees and save the date, November the 6th, 2025, and join us for our 12th Annual Induction Celebration Evening at Aurora's beautiful Royal Venetian Mansion. It promises to be an unforgettable night of pride, inspiration, and celebration. In the lead-up to the big night, be sure to follow us on social media for exciting updates and behind-the-scenes content, and don't forget to visit aurorashof.ca to join our email community and stay connected. To our 2025 class of inductees, congratulations and welcome to our community. Thank you for your ongoing support. Enjoy the evening. Game. Rod is saying thumbs up, November the 6th, 2025, and we shall see you all this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to receive the presentation? Council Thompson, Councilor Gillan, any questions for the presentation? All right, seeing none. Javid, Melanie, thank you very much for coming this evening. And to the 2025 inductees, congratulations. You know, I think I speak for all of us when we're so proud of our sporting community and, you know, being able to celebrate the excellence that members of our community have done throughout their careers is just extraordinary. And to be able to showcase that to future generations and for them to aspire to be the same, you know, as they, as they continue their journey through sports and being an Auroran. And so I'm incredibly proud. I know everyone sitting at this table is incredibly proud, and so is the entire community. So I think we're all looking forward to November 6th to celebrate that in style. And I, Javid, I will wear my jackets for you, just for you, okay? So congratulations, and we're looking forward to November 6th, and thank you for coming out this evening. Call the vote. All those in favor? Post that carries. So move to delegations. First up, we have 6.1, Christopher Harris, resident regarding Tamarack Trail Safety. You're more than welcome to stay. We got a little we got an action-packed agenda. Yeah. Christopher, just give us like a minute. Just let him clear out before we start. That way, yeah. Yeah, I think we're good. Okay, we're good. Oh, it's coming. There it is.
Oh, hello. Hi. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Caitlin. My husband's feeling a little shy, so he's just going to stay over there for now. Thank you for hearing us out again and for installing the stop sign at the middle of the eastern section of Tamarack last year. While we appreciate that action, the main concern remains particularly at the park and at the eastern curve of the street. Tamarack, the street we live on, was not designed as a heavy traffic and only has one sidewalk. This creates a serious safety concern for residents on the opposite side who must cross the street to access the bus stops, the mailbox, or the park. It's especially dangerous for children, seniors, and families. The curve at the east end creates a severe blind spot, and drivers come around with little time to react and at often excessive speeds. This winter alone, there were two serious accidents, one which you can see up on the board. I don't know if you can really tell, but behind the ambulance and the police, there's a car completely flipped over. Another one, a school bus, lost control and ended up on my neighbor's property at the bottom of the curve. These incidents should not be happening on a residential street with a 40-kilometer limit. I've definitely hit black ice in my time, and I've never lost enough control to be upside down. On Halloween, my two daughters and I were nearly struck while crossing the street after trick-or-treating. Sorry. Incidents like this are far too common and deeply concerning. We're asking for additional guidance and support. The stop sign has not been enough. We need effective traffic calming solutions, whether it's speed humps, curb extensions, or other proven measures to make our streets safer for everyone. I leave the safety of our residents and my children in your hands. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mika, and I'm 10 years old. You might remember me from last time. I live on Tamarack Trail, and I really love my street, but I'm not allowed to walk through the park by myself or even walk my dog because it's not safe. There are too many cars, and they go really fast, especially around the big curve. My parents and I are scared that cars won't see me in time to stop. There's only a sidewalk on one side of the street, so and we live on the side without one. That means I have to cross the road just to go to the park. Last Halloween, my mom, my sister, and I were almost hit by a car, and we were crossing the street to go home. It was really scary. Um, I just want to be able to walk through the park or walk my dog like everyone else without having a high chance of getting hit. Um, and if you do need a fundraiser, I could sell baked goods or anything. For more money, I would do anything to save my street. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Council, can I get a motion to receive delegation? Council Thompson, Council Gallo, any questions for the delegate? Council Gardner?
Thank you. Obviously, this is a very important concern and a concern for all of council to make sure our residents are as safe as possible. And I thank you for coming forward. Not easy. It's not, it's not easy when it's a good subject matter, but when it's a hard one. And I think council has heard your message. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sure, yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
So usually the venue, the process is to go to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. And I was expecting that to happen at the end of May, but staff advised Mr. Harris to come here and the ladies to speak with us directly. It just happens to be, I believe, prom night or some, something at the neighborhood schools, and I don't believe we have the the representation of the neighborhood who is also very worried about this, but I have a feeling we might have it at the council meeting. But in any case, we just you have represented your neighborhood very well. Thank you.
Councilor Gillan?
Thank you. I guess what was my question through Mr. Mayor to delegates, had you guys been working on a package for traffic calming already on the street in this area? Is that something that you guys have already been working on?
Caitlin?
Yeah. Hi. Um, I think that they've tried to put some of those boulders up, but because of how many houses there are, they can't, they've only put it near the stop sign. So there's nothing been done at the curve section, which is the most dangerous part. But I don't think that anything else has been under consideration.
Counselor?
Uh, thank you. What was that intersection that you showed, that picture of, just in your presentation? Tamarack and?
McClellan and Tamarack. So they were turning onto Tamarack. So they use it as a bypass. So they try and go as fast as possible to get to Henderson instead of going directly through McClellan to Henderson. So somehow they managed to flip. So that's at a stop sign area. So they should have been at zero kilometers an hour turning onto our street, but they managed to be upside down.
Counselor?
Thank you. Okay. I would just, I was asking because I know that a different part of Tamarack did come to council with a report about a traffic study, but it seems, sounds like to me you're asking on the other side of by McClellan. So our previous one is by Henderson, closer to Henderson. So is this the same area you're talking about then?
Um, on the neighbor's property, that's at Henderson and Tamarack. So there's a big curve kind of at the eastern side of Tamarack.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Henderson and McClellan, yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
And so what you're asking, if I may, through Mr. Mayor, you're asking for more of those bollards to extend closer to that street? Is that what you're asking, or is there something in specific?
For, yeah, suggestions. So we had wanted the stop sign. We ended up getting a stop sign last year when we came, but it's up closer towards the park, not near the curved section. So I'm asking for suggestions as opposed to trying to request specifics because I don't know what will help. I just know that there needs to be something.
Counselor?
Thank you. And I know in the wintertime, just as a general statement, bollards, I don't believe they have them for snow clearing, so they remove them in the wintertime. So that wouldn't be a viable solution. And I mean, black ice, I mean, obviously, black ice is black ice. However, was this something that that had happened this year, this, during this winter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Maybe speed humps would be better. I'm not sure. But yeah, it's mostly the curve because there's no visibility. And if anyone's trying to cross the road there, as people come up, there's no time to stop, especially at the speeds that they're going.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the delegate? Seeing none. Caitlin, thank you very much for coming this evening. Appreciate it. Call the vote. All those in favor? Post that carries. 6.2, Sornia Anwer, climate policy analyst, and Marion Sakari Zavar. I said that right? Are they online? Okay. This is in regards to the Atmospheric Fund 2023 Community Emissions Data and Progress on Climate Policies. Welcome. If floor is yours?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Samia Anwer. I am a climate policy analyst at the Atmospheric Fund. I've worked on various climate policies at all levels of government. I actually grew up in Newmarket, right next to Upper Canada Mall, so this reputation hits very close to home. I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
Hello, good evening. My name is Maryam Shakari Spard, and I'm the manager with Research and Innovation Team at the Atmospheric Fund.
Great. So just for some context, we met with town staff a few months ago to share the results of our carbon inventory, along with a set of climate policy recommendations. Staff encouraged us to bring this information to you directly, and we're grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight. We'd also like to talk a bit about Aurora's Home Energy retrofit loan program, which is on the agenda for later this evening. Having said that, we'd like to request an extension on the time limit, maybe an extra five minutes so that we can cover all of these topics, if that's possible.
Counselor? Councilor Gallo, Council Thompson, all those in favor? Post that carries. Ladies, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. Next slide? So just great. Thank you. So yeah, just a bit about us. The Atmospheric Fund is a regional climate agency that invests in low-carbon solutions for the Greater Toronto and Hamilton area and helps bring them to scale. We support innovative climate solutions through grant-making, impact investing, and policy advocacy. Next slide? So we started tracking carbon emissions across the GTA in 2015, and every year we make updates and try to improve the inventory. So we started tracking carbon emissions across the GTA in twenty fifteen and every year we make updates and try to improve the inventory. We look at adding more data and a big focus this year was providing city level data. The full inventory report is available at carbon dot taft dot C A and Maryam will talk about the inventory in detail shortly. Next slide. So first of all, I'd like to say that Aurora is doing great so far on being proactive about climate mitigation policies. Today, we'll be hearing from city staff about the Home Energy Retrofit Loan Program, which is a great step forward. Uh, while a few municipalities have implemented this type of program, Aurora would stand out as an early adopter, particularly within York region, where this type of initiative remains largely unexplored. So we're really happy to see it. Uh, digging into the benefits of this type of program, Aurora's buildings are responsible for forty-two percent of its carbon emissions. And uh retrofits will definitely help bring that percentage down, particularly from the use of heat pumps. Beyond carbon emissions, though, a retrofit loan program would help tackle energy poverty, which households even in affluent communities like Aurora do experience. Um, Aurora has a large stock of older homes, many of which rely on electric baseboard heating. And a switch to heat pumps could reduce household energy costs by up to fifty percent and free up capacity on the grid in high energy demand areas. Um, that's pretty meaningful when you consider that Aurora residents pay about thirty-seven hundred dollars a year on energy, which is the highest average uh in the region. And uh beyond affordability, a lone retrofit program would also help insulate households against extreme heat events, which are becoming more frequent every year. I also want to note that similar programs have been implemented in cities like Toronto and Burlington, which demonstrates that this type of initiative is absolutely feasible. And overall, we're very encouraged to see Aurora exploring this pathway, and we hope council will support the feasibility study and give direction to move forward with designing a program model that works for the town. Uh, and I'll let Maryam go ahead for the next slide.
I think thanks, Samia. Righty. So going back to inventory, uh, we conduct GTA inventories to help us understand where we need to focus as an organization and inform our decision making, make policy recommendations, and share the results with broad group of stakeholders. Next slide, please. You can see here uh the spread of total emissions across the map. Uh, these are not adjusted for population. Uh, in terms of total emissions, we saw increases uh anywhere from eight percent in Halton to almost three percent in Hamilton in twenty twenty-three. And across the GTA, emissions increased by two percent, reaching fifty-four point five million tons. While this might seem like a small increase, it's directly in contrast with eleven percent annual reduction we need to hit our future targets. We saw emissions increase across all regions in almost all sectors. And what is driving these increases is largely the transportation sector, as well as the increased amount of electricity, natural gas plant generation, driving up the carbon intensity of the electricity grid. Next slide, please. Here you can see a graph of historic emissions and where we currently sit in, other than the progress made during the coal phase doubt, most mostly between two thousand and five and two thousand and fifteen. We continue to see very little sustained progress across the region in reducing emission. So we are now effectively back to twenty nineteen emissions level, eroding a lot of the, the reductions we saw happen uh during the pandemic. And if we continue on the pathway, you can clearly see uh where we could end up being, which, which is pretty far away from our net zero targets. And to get us back on track, as I mentioned, we need the eleven percent reduction on average per year to sustain that through population growth that is expected to continue across the region. Next slide, please. So in York region, uh, transportation makes up fifty-four percent of emissions and, and York was the only other region where the transportation is the highest emitting sector. And building makes up forty percent of York's emissions and include emissions from natural gas burned on site for the heating and natural gas burned offsite to generate the electricity. And based agriculture make up a combined four percent of the total emissions in York. Next slide, please. And you see here that emissions have been rising since the pandemic. And in twenty twenty-three, there was a one point five percent increase in York's emissions, almost back to pre-pandemic emissions total. And it'll hit, hit it next year if, if current trend continues. Next slide, please. And here you see the per cabinet emissions trend and you see a slight increase of one percent in twenty twenty-three when we, we are adjusting for population. Next slide, please. Here in this waterfall graph, you see that between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two, building emission decreased by oh point oh four megatons, mostly due to the milder winter. Also, we are seeing some progress uh in reducing energy intensity in larger buildings. But we also saw significant increase in electricity emissions due to provincial grid becoming more and more carbon intensive. And transportation drove the total emission increase in York region and increased by oh point fifteen megatons. Next slide, please. As men- uh mentioned earlier, uh, uh, Samia, for first time, we've included city level data in the inventory. With this graphic, uh, we can see uh easily, we can compare cities' emissions total. Uh, this is not per cabinet emissions. Uh, and, and you can see Aurora is at oh point three megatons, uh, lower than other larger uh cities in York region. Next slide, please. Um, and here, uh, you'll see the detailed sector uh totals for York municipalities and uh Aurora has the lowest emissions in York among the cities where the data were available, obviously. And next slide. And here more specifically in Aurora, building emissions make up forty-six percent of the total emissions, out of which uh eighty-two percent coming from gas heating and eighteen percent uh from uh gas fire electricity generation. And transportation generates forty percent of the emissions and industrial and based make up a combined fourteen percent of the total emissions in town of Aurora. And now I'll turn it over to Samia for some policy recommendations.
Thanks, Maryam. Uh, next slide, please. So I wanted to quickly touch on a few policy opportunities for Aurora to build on the momentum from the retrofit feasibility study. So first, uh, building emissions performance standards are a policy that many municipalities in the GTA are looking to implement. These standards, uh, they limit carbon emissions from existing larger buildings and reduce carbon more than any other policy within the building sector. Um, while Aurora's housing stock is mostly single-family homes and low rise, uh, this policy might not suit Aurora today, but we do encourage implementing energy and water benchmarking as a key first step. Um, which would help identify which buildings are the biggest carbon emitters and can guide which developments to prioritize for retrofits. Uh, benchmarking is actually already required by the province under the EWRB, so municipalities do have the authority to implement such, um, such a policy. On the transportation side, Aurora established an EV charging station policy a few years back on the corporate side, so that's great to see. Um, one thing we're hoping to see more of is the removal of parking minimums for new developments. And for Aurora, this would be targeted more towards commercial and industrial development. Um, this would reduce car dependency. It supports transit, walkability, and lowers construction costs. And pairing it with a requirement for a hundred percent EV-ready parking would be really cost-effective. It's far cheaper to install EV outlets at construction than to retrofit them later. And with intensification on the horizon, this would future-proof new builds essentially. Uh, next slide, please. So on the electricity side, the ISO will be launching another round of energy procurement this year. We encourage Aurora to oppose um new natural gas generation and support battery energy storage systems instead, which are now more viable than ever and emit no harmful pollutants. And lastly, we recommend a review of local zoning and permitting bylaws to identify barriers to climate-friendly technologies. Um, we're currently working with Toronto on amending their zoning bylaw since it doesn't allow the installation of heat pumps in the front yard of a home, unless it's six meters from the lot line. And a ton of residents in Toronto, they don't have that kind of space in the front yard, but they're still impacted by this bylaw. Um, so there are many such examples that unintentionally restrict climate action. So a review of uh zoning bylaws and permitting processes can help Aurora remove any potential climate road back, uh, roadblocks that they may have.
If, if I can just get you guys to wrap up. Um, we've passed ten minutes now. Thank you.
Yeah, the next slide is just the conclusion. So thanks so much for your time. We're excited about the direction Aurora is heading and look forward to continuing to support your work. And we're more than happy to answer any questions either on the carbon inventory side or on the policy side.
Thank you. Counsel, I am motion to receive. Counsel Wees, Counsel Thompson, questions? Counsel Gardner?
Thank you. There was, I mean, I understand all of this. It's not new news, except the fact that we're not doing that well. But um, the, you mentioned that we should do um a study, a scan to identify geo-something neighborhoods. I'm, I'm guessing that's neighborhoods that are the um, the most emitters. I lost you. Okay.
The, are, are you referring to the um, the benchmarking, the energy and water benchmarking to which buildings are the biggest carbon emitters?
Counsel?
Perhaps. You said something that started with geo and it wasn't a term that I recognized. So um, but uh, I think that's what you meant, to look at where the most offending built structures and to try and concentrate on them.
Samia?
Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, abso- absolutely. Just um to respond to that, uh, I, I believe you were referring to the um, the benchmarking reporting requirement, which would identify the biggest carbon emitters um in Aurora and that would help guide developments uh to prioritize for, for retrofits. Um, and that's the benchmarking, that's the requirement that's already uh required by the province under the EWRB. Um, so I think that's what is being referred to.
Thank you. And I, I believe that we have done that. But I'll defer to staff, but not at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kellin?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the uh wholesome overview. It's nice to see what all our neighboring municipalities are doing and and it's also nice to see it broken down by category in respect to uh transportation, agriculture, buildings, and so forth. And I know that something we've identified in our energy plan that um homes and buildings tend to be the biggest culprits in addition to obviously uh transportation. So it's nice to see those numbers out there. Um, question on your last uh or one of your last slides, you had said still need to undertake a review of zoning bylaws and permitting process. Uh, have you identified anything in particular that you feel that municipalities need to review within that? It's quite comprehensive. So if there's something specific that you're pointing to. Because the only thing that I can really think of really is more on a provincial level when it comes to building codes and so forth. So was there something specific to municipalities that you're pointing to that would trigger us to review?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. Thank you, counselor. Um, so uh while we were reviewing the City of Toronto zoning bylaws, we identified a couple of different um, sort of low-hanging fruit, we'd like to call it, and the heat pumps issue was one of them where uh residents aren't able to install heat pumps uh in the front yard of the home unless it's like six meters from the lot line. Um, apart from that, there was a, um, there are issues around installing solar uh solar panels in commercial parking lots. Basically, they aren't allowed to uh i- in, in Toronto at all. So that's another one that we identified. And there are a couple of barriers that we've heard from stakeholders um regarding the installation of EV charging infrastructure in the GTA. Um, some, some stakeholders have said that um certain cities do not allow the installation of infrastructure uh based on design components. Um, so for example, if there was like red or certain types of colors on the charging infrastructure, they wouldn't be allowed to install it based on, based on that. So there, there are barriers like this that come up that we've been hearing from a ton of different companies. Um, and we've talked directly with installers, we've talked directly with architects, we've talked directly with quite a few stakeholders about this. And um there are a couple of different uh issues that I can point towards. We can always send city staff the reports that we developed for the City of Toronto, and then we developed one for the province as well, actually, about um zoning barriers to climate tech. So um I hope that answers the question a bit.
Counsel?
Thank you. It does. But if you don't mind, just to kind of repeat, I was just trying to write some notes. What was the reason why they, some municipalities were not allowed to install EV stations or the infrastructure for? What was the reason again? I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Just uh design components was the, was the reason for that. Just to really, you know, shouldn't be a barrier, but it is sort of thing.
Interesting. Okay.
Thank you so much. No problem.
Counsel Thompson?
Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. Just a couple, a couple of questions related to the slides. For the most part, the slides you presented tonight show York region's historical data year over year, and for the most current data set, it shows a slight uptick in total emissions. But I'm more interested in the one slide where it actually broke down the various municipalities, specifically showing that Aurora produced zero point three megatons. Do you have any data to show whether or not Aurora is increasing the same or decreasing its uh, its carbon emissions?
Samia?
Um, I can take that one. That, that's a great question. Uh, and since we just started last year to report on city level uh data for the municipality level, we didn't have enough information from uh and data from last year's historical years to be able to do same a year over year and, and the graphs that goes back like to twenty fifteen, but we are working with the city staff uh to uh access those data. Uh, I guess for Aurora, we uh have been able to go a few years back, but uh um, I guess generally, uh, the overall, um, we are seeing a similar trend as the region for, for all this, uh, there's the lower tier municipalities in each region. But we are working with city staff to gather more data to be able to see that your barrier trend for the lower tier municipalities.
Oh, thank you. Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess if we see you in a year's time from now, you'll have some more of that city level or in this case, town level information.
That's right.
Thank you. You, any other questions? Seeing none, ladies, thank you very much for coming out this evening. Counsel, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Oppose, that carries. Next, we have six point three, Kathy Williams, Chair, and Lynn Logan, Treasurer, Aurora Farmers Market. Welcome. Five minutes and the floor is yours?
I'm Mayor Maracas and members of council. I am Kathy Williams, Chair of the Aurora Farmers Market and Artisan Fair. I'm here tonight on behalf of our Board of Directors to seek your support. Next slide. I'm sorry.
Hi, Kathy, can I get you closer to the mic? And if you can lift it up, there you go. Perfect.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so next slide. Let me begin with a brief overview of who we are. Our mission statement is where food, art, and community meet. Our vision statement is to connect the community with local growers of fresh food and encourage healthy eating choices. Create a stimulating cultural environment that promotes local artists and support the community that has welcomed us. Many of you have attended the market. Thank you. You've seen firsthand the vibrancy and spirit that make it so special. Next slide, please. The market began in two thousand and two in the Temperance Street parking lot with just ten vendors, championed by Counselor Nigel Keen. In two thousand and eight, we relocated to Town Park under a bylaw change, supported then by Counselor Stephen Granger. By twenty nineteen, we had grown to sixty-seven vendors, eleven farms, eleven food vendors, twenty-two artisans, and twenty-three community groups. And were supported by Counselor Humphries. We were also one of the few farmers markets that remained open during COVID and even provided guidance to other markets. Slide four, please. Today, we welcome over thirty-seven thousand attendees each season and are supported by Mayor Maracas and our liaison, Counselor Wees. We showcase more than thirty local organizations and generate over fifteen hundred volunteer hours. We are one of the only markets sourcing all goods from within two hundred kilometers of Aurora. The Aurora Farmers Market has become one of the town's cultural gems, a true destination within York region. Slide five, please. Financially, we are on solid footing. Revenue continues to increase, outpacing the growth in expenses, but with growth comes new challenges. Slide six. Our biggest challenge is sustainability. As a volunteer-run organization, we've reached our capacity. Our dedicated market core- Our dedicated market coordinator is retiring after this season, and the demands of operating a modern market with increased vendor needs, social media, volunteer management, and weekly logistics are no longer manageable by a working board alone. Slide seven, please. That's why we are here tonight. We are asking the town to consider supporting a shift in our structure from a working board to a governance board. That's the last slide you have? Okay. This would allow us to focus on oversight, approving vendors, ensuring compliance with Farmers Market Ontario standards, and guiding programming. To do this, we respectfully request the town to consider hiring a market manager or implementing a staff support model. This role would handle administration, vendor communications, weekly logistics, volunteer coordination, programming, and compliance, ideally held by someone with a market management certificate. Other municipalities already have similar town-supported staffing models in place. Without this support, the future of the Aurora Farmers Market beyond 2025 is uncertain. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are proud of how far the market has come and hopeful about what it can continue to be with your support.
Thank you, Cathy.
Nice.
And a motion to receive. Counsel Thompson, Counsel Kim, questions, Counsel Reese?
Yes, Cathy, thanks for coming today and for 23 years of service that Farmers Market has had. And I don't know how long you've been there, but I know that. Thanks also, if you're wondering where the treats came from, thanks for bringing those to us. Can I ask a question, you're, you're incorporated as a not-for-profit now?
Cathy?
So you're a not-for-profit.
Not-for-profit, okay. And the, you don't have in your financial statements anything to do with reserves? Are you, are you keeping a, a reserve somewhere in your financial statements, you just haven't?
Cathy?
One moment.
Sure, you may want to check, thanks, Mayor.
Lynn, come up.
Lynn, if I can just get you to come up, because just need to get you on the mic, everyone can hear you, please.
This is Lynn, our treasurer. Yes, we, we do have a reserve that we haven't had to go into at this point. It's the, the result of the, the fees that we charge, the sponsorships that we get, the grants that we receive, offset by our annual expenses, which we set a budget for annually, and that's how we track how we're performing on an annual basis, vis-à-vis how much we're getting in, how much we're paying out. But we do have the reserve in, in, in case of, you know, circumstances that we don't foresee going into the next year.
Counselor.
Thanks. So I understand then, through you, Mayor, that this is really a sustainability issue. You've had a lot of volunteers volunteering a lot of time, but the job is getting too big, and you want to go to a professionally managed, volunteer-driven model of a, of a structure. Is that basically it? Through you? My question then would be if the council so decides to do so, would you be prepared to come back and give us a presentation when budget is being pursued for 2026 as a, for instance, a community partner or some other form like that with the full set of financials, through you, Mayor?
Absolutely, and those are available at, at any time for your review.
Thank you, I agree, this is a gem, and it's a tourist opportunity, bring people in from out of town, and it's a regular for many folks. So thanks for all the work you've done.
Any other questions? Counsel Thompson?
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight, just, I just want to clarify the ask itself, because you say you're asking the town to hire a marketing manager or another staffing model. So I just want to be clear whether you're looking for the town to provide the Farmers Market with funds for you to hire a marketing manager, or you're asking the town to take on a new employee, a marketing manager, to work with you? Or either or?
Cathy?
Through the, through you, Mayor.
Give us funds to hire a market manager or to let us use some of the staff.
Thank you for the clarification.
Essentially, it's, it's, you know, in my way of thinking about it, it's essentially a special event that we put on every Saturday from the beginning of May to the end of October. And part of our thought process in coming tonight was that you have an exceptional team that regularly puts on special events that is, you know, very savvy and all of the items that are required to put on a special event in the town of Aurora.
Counselor.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Counsel Gardner.
Thank you, my counsel was, question was just answered, but while I have the mic, thank you very much. It is a very, very special part of Aurora's summer, spring, fall.
Any other questions? Seeing none, ladies, thank you very much for coming this evening. We all cherish the Farmers Market, we think it's one of the greatest farmers markets. I, I touted as one of the best in the GTA, but I'm a little bit biased, but I'll take it. You guys do a phenomenal job, and you know I'll see you there at 8:00 AM to go get my breakfast sandwich, so. Yes, absolutely, so thank you for coming this evening. Call the vote? Call the vote? All who's in favor? Sorry, opposed, sorry, both that carries. 6.4 Cathy Duncan, Climate Action, Newmarket Aurora. Cathy, welcome, you have five minutes, floor is yours.
Very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, and visitors. On behalf of Climate Action Aurora, I come to you today with deep concern. You may be aware that Bill 5 was passed by the provincial legislature last week. That being said, there is still a chance to pull it back. There will be legal action with respect to the bill. The province walked back the greenback, Green Belt Plan due to public outcry, and it can be done again. Our concern is that while the intent of Bills 5 and 17 are to speed up housing and streamline the economy, the real impact they will have is entirely different. Next slide, please. What it will impact is our right to shape our communities, to protect our lands, our water, and our wildlife, and to be heard. Next slide, please. Bill 5 is not just about speeding up mining projects, that's only six of its 220-plus pages. On its own, streamlining a process that can take up to 15 years due to poor interministerial coordination would be welcome. The industry has long called for a one-project, one-process approach. Instead, Bill 5 provides the framework to overrule any and all provincial legislation and create special economic zones, which can be anywhere. The Green Belt, the Oak Ridge's moraine, or provincial parks like Algonquin. And with legal disclaimers built in to the bill such that there can be no recourse before, during, or after any of the projects. Bill 5 actually guts environmental and endangered species protections, leaving in place a vague conservation plan where added dollars are pointless, given the reduction of species protections. As noted by Ontario Nature, it's like bringing a bucket to a wildfire. At the hearings, nature groups pleaded endangered species are not a Jenga game. Even removing one could cause the entire system to fail. Bill 5's gutting of the term habitat essentially means this, you're safe in your bedroom, but not your kitchen, your yard, or your local grocery store. And once you're out of the bedroom, that's it. It's like walking out of a merge with no recovery plan. Even freshwater is no longer a guaranteed protection. Next slide, please. At the legislator committee, legislature committee hearings, Kanna Heard Mining and Energy Companies say they don't need special economic zones. They want to keep strong environmental standards that protect Ontario's credibility internationally, and their partnerships with First Nation communities were essential to their success. We also heard indigenous leaders say clearly, they want to be at the table from the start, which they were not, not have the government take what it wants without even knocking at the door. Mr. Mayor, in your land acknowledgement earlier this evening, you indicated that the town of Aurora is a partner to the Chipewas of Georgina Island in protecting the environment that we sit on, and we urge you to continue that. Bill 5 allows for ministerial zoning orders and special economic zone exemptions, which would override local planning. This includes the town of Aurora's official plan that's already been signed off. There's been significant community consultation for that plan, and essentially, the province could come along and completely annihilate it. Bill 5 could also allow the province to force the town to service growth areas that are not currently in capital budgets, burdening future taxpayers beyond current forecasts. It will strain water, wastewater, transit, and road infrastructure. Within the 24, 2024 Housing Needs Assessment, the town notes that one done properly and regularly, housing needs assessments allow a community to answer fundamental questions, including how we can set meaningful housing targets and measure progress to support the right kind of housing for all residents. The provisions in Bill 5 risk this and are potentially at odds with Canada's housing plan. Next slide, please. Pivoting to Bill 17. Should be coming. Next slide, thanks, that's okay. It's also dangerous for municipalities, it threaten years, it threatens years of local planning and public engagement, things like the green building standards, the Community Energy Plan, which was spoken about earlier tonight, and the non-proliferation of fossil fuels resolution. It takes away the decision-making and consultation, and it can be overruled without explanation at any time. It undercuts our ability to build sustainably, to meet climate goals, and to create truly affordable housing for our youth and seniors with community input. Next slide, please. Both of these bills reduce the reports that the municipality can request from developers. They also centralize power in cabinet. Next slide, please. With both of these bills, the province may force boundary expansions without council or public input, and regional density targets could be ignored. Recently, on June 2nd, we delegated to the town of Newmarket. During that delegation, the mayor committed to sending a letter to the province outlining the town's concerns with Bills 5 and an ERO admission to Bill 17. That is still an opportunity. Bill 17's ERO submission can be done up to and including end of day tomorrow. During the week of May 26th, the province indicated publicly that they were open to changes to Bill 5 and were considering amendments. However, they then announced at the beginning of the week of June 2nd that they would move to limit debate in the House on the proposed bill. And in fact, they didn't make the amendments that they promised. Next slide, please.
Cathy, if I can just get you to wrap up?
Yeah, sure thing. These bills are also counter to Treaty 9 with respect to the Chipewas of Georgina Island, and they further erode transparency and procedural fairness. We urge the town of Aurora to oppose Bill 5 and Bill 17 as they are currently written, and we encourage a streamlined application process with clear predictable guidelines. We also recommend that the town calls on the province to withdraw or significantly amend both bills in an expedited but thorough consultation with municipalities, First Nations, and conservation authorities. The issue is government red tape. We also recommend that the town inform and encourage other municipalities and York Region to support opposition to Bills 5 and 17. Thank you.
You had a motion to receive presentation with Counsel Gardner, Counsel Gavlin. Any questions, Counsel Gardner?
Thank you very much for coming, I did know about these bills, but certainly not in the depth of your presentation. Could you provide a copy of your presentation to council? Is, is it on our agenda?
Yep. Yes, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. It's very concerning. I could just keep saying that over and over, I'm certainly, I don't know how council will feel, but I'm certainly in support of doing what the town of Newmarket did. We have responsibility to protect our land and our environment. And I believe that's what our residents want. Thank you.
Counsel Wees?
Thank you, Cathy, I'm from Dresden, it's my hometown, so I'm well aware of the circumstances down there and the controversy that it has. So I'm in full support of us doing something formal in opposition, and I want to thank you for your speaker notes and the other notes that you've provided, and we'll see what happens here at council. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Gavlin?
Thank you, so just, so I understand what you're, you're looking for. You're looking for us to write something to the province indicating that the town is not in favor of these two bills? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Cathy?
Yes, that would be correct, there are a number of other municipalities which are listed on one of the slides, which have already come out in full opposition to these bills as well. And then, as I mentioned, the mayor in Newmarket on the second did indicate that they would send a letter to the province in opposition to the bills and submit something to the ERO for Bill 17.
And did I understand correctly, Mr. Mayor, through you, that the deadline is tomorrow?
The deadline for the ERO submission is tomorrow. However, Bill 5 passed in the legislator, legislature last week. There's still the opportunity, as we saw with the Green Belt, to walk things back.
Counselor.
And is there a deadline for that, but that's an open?
No, there's no deadline, in fact, there are a number of petitions circulating that are open till the legislature comes back in the fall and will be presented in the fall.
Counselor.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're at Committee of the Whole, so we don't act as council in terms of final decisions. That'll happen in two weeks' time, but I'm, I'm sure maybe the mayor can do something on his own on behalf of council, but we'll leave that up to him.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Cathy, thank you very much for coming out this evening. Call the vote, all who's in favor? Pose, what carries? 6.5 Lindsay, Lindsay. Dondre Phillip, did I say that right? Close. We'll welcome Lindsay, you have five minutes, the floor is yours.
Sure, thank you very much, so I'm here tonight to speak about the traffic calming on McLennan Drive. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening to speak. I appreciate the town's commitment to traffic safety and the use of data to guide decisions. I'm a mom of three small children, and we've lived there for close to a decade, and there are multiple young families as well as seniors on our street, very similar to what we heard with Tamra Trail. I'm representing my street and my neighbors to express concern that the current traffic data that was collected doesn't reflect the reality we experience daily. When we started petitioning in 2023, every neighbor that we spoke to on our street was for traffic calming measures on McLennan Drive. We were told back then that there was a shortage of speed readers, and it seems that this is still the case. The data collection that was recently done was just over seven days, and we felt that that seven days is a very short window and doesn't truly reflect the full range of traffic behaviors, especially during seasonal changes, holidays, or summer when kids and adults are outside playing and crossing the, the road more frequently. Our street as well only has a sidewalk on one side of the road, so kids are, need to cross to the sidewalk side for the school bus, et cetera. Furthermore, the monitoring device that was placed on our street was not on a portion of the street where we see the most frequent and dangerous speeds. It definitely missed the high, the true high-risk zone, which many of us could point to from direct experience. It seems that the location of the data collection monitors were not well-planned in order to provide very accurate speeded data collection. We felt there was a lot of effort near our neighborhood with monitoring and creating an infrastructure for the safe crossing of the Turtles over Henderson, and we're just asking for the same dedication for the residents of our streets for the safe crossing of our kids and our neighbors. We regularly observe cars speeding. We regularly observe cars speeding well above the limit, especially after school. There have been many close calls with myself, with kids, with pets and cyclists that have not been captured by this seven-day dataset. But they're very real instances for those who live there. At the most recent traffic meeting, it was mentioned that our street is not within a school zone, and it seemed that that point was used as part of the justification for perhaps not moving ahead with traffic calming. But I just wanted to point out that the most recent tragic cases of children that were struck by cars, speeding cars, did not occur in school zones, both of them being in Vaughan, one of them as early, as recent as eleven months ago. And so this shows that it's not only school zones where children and families are at risk. Residential streets like ours, where kids walk, play, bike, deserve the same level of proactive safety consideration. I mentioned it's a family street. We have kids crossing mid-block. We only have the sidewalk on one side. We also have a very long stretch of street that does not have a stop sign. There is an intersection of Willis and McLennan, and there is a stop sign, but only going in one direction. Oftentimes, cars will fly down Willis and turn onto McLennan. This is also where our elementary school children wait for their buses. Some of the buses are located where there is no sidewalk at all, or the bus stop, sorry. There's also a long stretch and very few natural slowdown points with a hill at the bottom. So for us neighbors living at the bottom of that hill, that's where we see most of the cars flying down, and it makes it very difficult to cross the street, so much so that I had a few elderly neighbors last year that didn't feel comfortable going out for their walks because there was too many cars coming down. Lastly, the traffic, the criteria for traffic calming are very helpful, but they may not reflect the full picture in lower-volume residential streets such as ours, where even a few speeders can create serious danger. Even if the volume or speed threshold was not met by this data collection, we were asking to the town to explore lower-intensity and low-cost solutions like flex posts, a temporary speed feedback sign, or a pilot speed bump. Thank you.
Thank you. You got a motion to receive. Councilor Kim, Councilor Gardner. Questions, Councilor Gardner?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I forgot the whole evening about that. Thank you for coming. So I'm the council representative on that, on the traffic safety, that part of the committee that we're talking about, traffic safety. And it was my impression was because it did the warrants. It meant less than half of the required warrants for the area. But as you say, it's really the, it's the residents' perception who live there all the time that it is a difficult area. So I don't know what council wants to do. Our traffic analyst has already looked at the area. But I think it was Councilor Thompson who said a few years ago that sometimes, sorry if I missed, I'm not going to try and quote you, that, you know, we have these rules that come down basically from the province. But sometimes we have to make an exception depending on the situation. I'm not saying we should make an exception in this case, but you have taken the trouble to, to, it's gone to committee and to come to us. So perhaps we can take another look at it.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Lindsay, thank you very much for coming this evening. Call the vote. All those in favor. Post that carries. Six point six, Jordan Drudge. He's not here. Okay. Not here. Oh, look, he's here. Welcome. Just need you to identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
Before I start, I would like to take this opportunity to give a shout out to our friends to the south, the United States Army, who are celebrating their two-hundred-and-fiftyth birthday on June fourteenth. The theme of their celebrations this year is "This Will Defend." Yell it up.
I can't. I don't know if anybody else is having problems hearing you. Is anybody having problems hearing?
I can say I like this.
Somewhat. Yeah, so let's try that. Thank you.
Okay. Before I start, I would like to take this opportunity to give a shout out to our friends to the south, the United States Army, who are celebrating their two-hundred-and-fiftyth birthday on June fourteenth. The theme of their celebrations this year is "This Will Defend." I would also like to extend to all the fathers, brothers, uncles, nephews, grandfathers, anybody else who may find themselves stepping into a role of leadership. A very happy Father's Day. My name is John one-one-seven. I am a Spartan II super soldier, but most people know me as the Master Chief, or simply Chief. I was hanging out at Jordan's house, taking a break from battling elites, and was watching cat videos on YouTube when I came across a video clearly made by a fan of Aurora, and it immediately caught my attention. In that video, Aurora residents Mika Harris and her mom Caitlin were talking about the scary traffic problems on their street, Tamara Trail, and being constantly scared and frightened to cross the street, to catch the school bus, or to go to the park. Their neighbors, Anne Harrison and Joyce Mikros, went into great detail about the rampant speeding, damage to property, and near misses. Joyce even said she had been hit by a car and also bravely tried to use the gravity hammer to stop a car from hitting her kids. My good buddy Jordan, who I was staying with, knows all about the pain and suffering that can happen when situations like this go very wrong and someone gets seriously injured, or worse. Cortana is off on vacation somewhere with his wife, the queen of sleepovers. So he was nice enough to set up a gamertag on the internet for me so we can play multiplayer video games online together, which is synergy at falencsystems.ca. When I asked him about this problem, he told me about his grandfather, Dwayne Laheed. He was a former officer for both York Region Police and the Ontario Provincial Police. He also purchased the Aurora Driving School business and renamed it to Ontario New Drivers, becoming a driving instructor with his good friend Mark McDonald. He told me since his granddad stopped teaching people how to drive, the roads have become a lot less safe for everyone. He said everyone in town knew who he was and probably taught them how to drive, and that his name was synonymous with road safety. Not many people know this, but he was also a member of the LGBT community, which stands for ludicrous gasoline buying tactics. I started thinking of ways I could help to solve this problem. And my friend made mention of his own father, Gary Drudge, who likes to fix things even if they aren't broken. He was so good at doing this and coming up with solutions to problems that didn't even exist yet, that he later formed his own company on a whim and named it Fandro Enterprises. He said he thought his dad was single-handedly trying to take over the world, and he barely nearly succeeded in doing so, infiltrating a massive company named Sedexo, who employs hundreds of thousands of people worldwide in fifty-five countries and serves one hundred million customers daily. He is living proof that with the right equipment, anybody can be a superhero. I thought it was very brave and courageous of Mika to try and help her community by asking for a stop sign to be put in. Town council agreed to her request. But as her father Christopher has observed, unfortunately, over the past year that it has been installed, the problems still continue. Out of options, I knew it was time to help these very nice people and make their community safer for them. Our duty as soldiers is to protect humanity, whatever the cost. Sergeant Major Avery Johnson once told me, folks need heroes chief to give them hope. So smile, would you? Well, we still got something to smile about. I thought long and hard about what these people have been going through for thirty-plus years and realized this must be what it feels like, be constantly at war, unable to relax and just enjoy life.
Sir Drudge, can I get you to finish up, please? You have five minutes.
Mika's bravery for standing up and fighting back to protect her friends and family reminded me of what it felt like during the times I was alone in the last Spartan standing. Dr. Catherine Halsey once said, "The child could be, this child could be more useful to the UNSC than a fleet of destroyers, a thousand lieutenants, or even me." In the end, one child could be the difference between peace and an unwinnable war. Since we can't give everyone my own armor and energy shields, the next best thing would be to try and actively stop the speeding cars before someone gets hit or ends up in someone's living room. Some good friends of mine who know a lot about signals came up with an idea to install traffic signals, like those found on the QEW onramps, to force the cars to stop at the entrances of the community and only change the red signal to green when the vehicle has come to a complete stop.
Sir Drudge, can I get you to finish up, please?
Almost, sir. They also told me it might be possible to keep the signals red while a school bus is in the neighborhood to make sure everyone getting on or off the bus can do so safely. I think I speak for the silent majority when I say enough is enough. It is time to take the bull by the horns and try something new to stop this reckless and very dangerous driving. Not everyone is aware of the amazing advances in technology now available that we, that can be very effective in solving these kinds of problems. And I think there are lots of people ready, willing, and able to help tackle this issue. Thank you.
You had a motion to approve, I mean, to receive, sorry. Councilor Gardner, Councilor Thompson, Councilor Gardner, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Drudge, for your very heartfelt comments. And of course, it is true that we want to make our residents as safe as possible. So appreciate your comments, and I'm sure that we'll do the best we can to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call the vote. All those in favor. Post that carries. Let's move to Advisory Committee meeting minutes. Someone like to move those? Move those. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Kim, any questions on those? Call the vote. All those in favor. Post that carries. Any items that anyone wants to pull? Yep. Councilor Gallow?
Eight, eight point one. Fifteen-two and fifteen-three.
Any others? Fifteen-four, the one that was added. Any others? Anything else? Council release?
Nine-one?
Yep.
Okay, so that's in, thirteen-one has been in?
Nope.
Windows thirteen-one?
Any others? Eight point one, nine point one, thirteen point one, fifteen point two, fifteen point three, fifteen point four. Nope.
You had the delegate? And was fourteen point one pulled?
Nope, but I'll need you to pull that. Thank you. Any others? Yeah, motion to approve the remaining items minus eight point one, nine point one, thirteen point one, fourteen point one, fourteen point three, fifteen point two, fifteen point three, and fifteen point four. Councilor Kim, second. Councilor Gallow, go ahead. Call the vote. All those in favor. Post that carries. Call the eighteen point one. Councilor Gallow, you pulled this, that you want to move the recommendation. Yeah, eight point one, sorry. So I was on, I was looking at the right one. Sorry, I apologize. Well, it is a long agenda, but eight point one. Did you want to move the recommendation? Thank you. Seconder? Council release, thank you. Council Gallow, go ahead.
Thank you. Could I just get through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, whether or not there's been some communication with BDO and the ability to release their report to close session, please?
Mr. Mayor, I've been cast.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I had a conversation with BDO this afternoon. They conferred with their in-house legal, and they have not provided permission to release the report. They said the report was intended to be a confidential report. So they are declining the, releasing it publicly.
Counselor.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, does that mean that nothing in that report can be released publicly?
Mr. Mayor, I've been cast, or Mrs. Saria?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct. Nothing can be released then.
Counselor.
So when we have in our, in the staff's report, closed session report, when we have verbatim excerpts from their report that is now part of a public agenda, does that contradict that we're not allowed to release anything from that, from BDO's report?
Mrs. Saria?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, it doesn't because the closed session report is a town record, and we own that report. We're the author of that report. And so we've allowed it to be released, and that's why it's being released.
Counselor.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, notwithstanding the fact that the information is identical in the BDO report, we can release that publicly because we inserted it into our report?
Mrs. Saria?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Technically speaking, yes. However, I'm sure that BDO is not aware that we did put that in the report.
Counselor.
And that is, that is pretty much my point, that notwithstanding them saying, no, we've done it anyway. Perhaps not the whole report, but we've already done it. And that's why I'm pushing this issue, because it doesn't make sense to me that there's sections of their report that is now public, yet they tell us we can't release their report. We already have. There are sections of that report that I would like the public to, to see. So I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, is there anything more we can do? I understand it was through a phone conversation, nothing in writing. Is there any more that we can do if we explain to them? Listen, some of it is already public. Can we release the balance of it?
Mrs. Saria?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of having a conversation, Ms. Wayne Wrightfang-Hessel could attempt to have that conversation with BDO. Other than that, if they refuse to disclose it despite us having released some of the information, I'm not aware of any mechanism that we can, that we have that we can force them to do so.
Counselor.
Okay. Just for future reference, when we engage in third parties and they have their, you know, classic last paragraph, like BDO has saying, you know, it's not for, it's for a specific purpose, not necessarily for public consumption. We're a public body here, and the public funds those things. Is there anything we can do at the onset of when we engage them to have it be clear that those types of clauses should be removed or not part of their reporting? And that they're, they're told from the beginning that potentially this could be public through you, Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Saria?
Well, we can have those conversations, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we can have those conversations with them at the beginning. In my opinion, I wouldn't recommend it because I don't think you would then get an accurate picture of what the consultant is trying to stress to counsel. So I make it similar to when I'm talking to you in closed session versus when I'm talking to you in open session. So I make it similar to when I'm talking to you in closed session versus, versus when I'm talking to you in open session. In closed sessions, staff feel that there's more information that we can provide, knowing that it won't be released to the public. And I feel that consultants will feel the same way. If we start streamlining them on what's going to come out in the public, when they are writing that report initially, they will be mindful of that and they might not give the full picture that they would have wanted to if they knew it would be strictly confidential.
Counselor.
And just hearing this for the first time, my initial thoughts and no offense to anyone, to me, that's quite alarming. If because of the fact it's public, someone, a body, a professional body, wouldn't give us all the facts or all the information is alarming to me. Notwithstanding that, we'll leave that aside. The, I'm glad to see most of it is out. I'm glad to see some of the BDO report is, is now public. It's been consumed, it's available to any, everyone. I, I, I believe that these types of things shouldn't require a member's motion to have them released. We should have a regular scheduled review of closed session uh, reports that we base our decisions on and once uh, staff feels they're ready to be, to be um, put on a public, doesn't even have to be on agenda, could be on the, on the, on the, on the website, made public, public. Uh, they should be done by course, not necessarily um, because I or anyone else have asked, but I'm happy that this is now public uh, and they, everyone can see exactly, well, not all the information, but most of the information that we based our, our decisions on.
Counsel Gardner?
Thank you. Uh, just a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to I don't know who to put on the spot, but um, in our procedural bylaw, I believe it says that um, closed session reports can't be released until council agrees that they can. And we have done that. So why would, why would that just not apply? I mean, did we actually call? Did we actually call BDO to see if they gave us their permission? Because I think we have permission in our procedural bylaw to release anything that's enclosed.
Mr. Sarial?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, BDO is not um, bound by our procedural bylaw. So that's the first part. The second part is when we release information, we do it and we've spoken about this before in accordance with municipal freedom of information and FIPPA, whatever it stands for. And so even though we're not having council obviously go through an FOI request, we are still obligated to follow a process that's outlined in FIPPA and one of the exemptions is third-party reports. And so BDO, BDO's report would qualify as a third-party report. And in accordance with FIPPA, we need to ask them their consent in order to disclose their report because they are the author of the report.
Uh, then I, through you, Mr. Mayor, certainly agree with Counselor Gallow. This is, it's, it's alarming to think that the public, especially if the public has spent money on something, that they can't have the full information that council had. It, it, it's it's very disquieting. That's how I find it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Counsel Gallow, second time?
Just through you, Mr. Mayor, if we could ask staff to uh, reengage BDO uh, and have them, I guess, send a copy of our current, or what's publicly available and request, at least in writing, uh, their, their position on it.
Mr. Mayor, then Kessel, can you follow up with BDO, please?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I can have them follow up uh, in writing and provide them what is on the public agenda.
Thank you.
To be clear, not just to ask them to say, no, you can't have it, but to show them our report and the fact that some of the information in their report is already public.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I can do that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All the vote, all those in favor? Pose that carries. Nine point one, Counsel Reese, oh, nope. Counsel Gallow, you pulled that one. Do you want to move the recommendation?
Just, just number one for now. Just to receive for now.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Reese, go ahead, Counsel Gallow.
Um, so generally speaking, and, and you'll know that I typically don't mince my words and I mean, no offense to anyone, but I've been at this table, I think, fourteen years. Um, and I can, uh, I can sense when staff is not necessarily in favor of a particular initiative or, or project. And to me, this is one of those exercises. Uh, we've, we've been able to find many, many, many reasons why this, in, in fact, it's, it's clear in the report that staff is not in support of this project. It was supposed to be a feasibility study and maybe I miscommunicated, miscommunicated in terms of the scope of it. It was never my intent and I'll call it a high-level service and maybe it isn't. But it gives me that impression. To me, what I was looking for was an ability under extreme circumstances, particularly in the winter, for anyone. A place to to stay warm between eleven PM and seven AM, which is when our facilities are, are closed. Not meal services, not three or four staff, not even cots. An ability for someone who's in the cold to be able to have a warm place in one of our facilities, either the senior center, the dome, one of our other facilities. That was the intent that I was trying to, to accomplish. Uh, not a full service and I don't disagree with staff that many of what's in this report is a responsibility of, of York region. Under those extreme events, we do, uh, I believe, and we'll get clarification in a second, uh, that we do open up our facilities during the day up until eleven PM for anyone seeking shelter from either the cold or the heat. Um, and just to clarify through you, Mr. Mayor, that that's the case.
Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. The provision is uh, when the region declares an extreme weather event, uh, and notices sent to municipal facilities and staff in particular. And we then in turn announce, we already opened, but we announced that we are part of uh, an offering of warming and cooling centers during those events.
Counselor.
Um, and, and obviously at eleven PM, when they're closed, um, they have nowhere else to go. Uh, and although the report says, I think it's fifty-six or so winter events, I have no reason to argue that. I, I, I don't remember seeing them in terms of communication to us, but I'm sure somehow it's been communicated. It seems like a really high number, but if that's the case, that's what it is. I, I'm not in favor of what's being proposed. You'll see later on, I'm asking for a zero-based budget. I, I sure certainly am not in favor of spending a hundred and seventy-some-odd thousand dollars uh, for this, notwithstanding the importance of it. And let's not forget, someone in our community passed away from the cold this past winter in our border. Um, so if that's not motivation enough to try to do something and not rely on uh, upper-tier governments, uh, to the extent we can and to the extent that, that the taxpayers are, are okay with uh, doing this type of thing. Um, I, I'd like to propose a pilot project for this winter. Uh, and we pick a facility, maybe it's a senior center. And I know that in the past, through speaking to Counselor Gardner, there's been emergency center that was, that was set up uh, there in the past um, as a pilot project. And let's see how, how it goes with, with very minimal staff and perhaps we can even get some volunteers if we reach out to various service groups or the churches. Um, I'm not interested in, in putting some crazy budget towards this. Um, I, I am interested in doing something in a reasonable way from eleven to seven AM. Um, and uh, I'd like to see perhaps in September, a report back outlining the feasibility of, of that type of thing um, in one of our facilities. So that's, that's my sense of this.
Counsel Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't see the original motion here, but this is, I think I seconded it. This is not at all, excuse me, what I expected. I don't even know where this comes from. We had a, an ice storm in Aurora, maybe, I don't know how long, maybe eight or nine or ten years ago. And the area on the west side of Young didn't have any power. And I just happened to come over uh, to the town hall and I saw cars at the senior center and I went in and it was a warming center. And I believe it was a warming center for the whole duration of that weather event because um, there were cots for people to sleep on. And uh, the uh, I heard that there hadn't been cots the night before. So this was obviously something, maybe Ms. McDougal, this was obviously something that we did. But nobody knew about it because there was only one other lady there and myself and she lived relatively near me. And I don't even know how she ended up there, maybe because she was a member of the senior center, but my purpose with this motion, not this motion, with the one that I, I believe I seconded was that people, residents, anybody in town would know that there was a place that they could go if it was cold and they had no power. And uh, as Mr. CIO knows, we had two uh, loss of power events in, in a wide area, um, basically around the No Frills store in Aurora. It wasn't freezing cold, but it was cold and I just happened to be at the library. And there was an old couple, a really old couple, and they were just sitting at, at the library in one of those kind of one and a half chairs. And they were just together and I asked them what they were doing there and they couldn't get any information on when their power was going to come back on, so they went to the library to be warm. So that's, that's what I'm hoping for. I'm hoping that we can provide something for anybody in Aurora if they are cold. And in fact, I think the heat kills more people than the cold. And we are going to have some very warm summer days uh, with climate change. It's already started and there just should be a place where the people that we are supposed to be taken care of can go. So I'm not sure how this, this is not at all what I was talking about. And also, again, I'm not interested in this. It would be lovely to have this, but this is not in our budget, so. Just to can, what Counselor Gallow said, I would just like to have a report where people could know where they could go. And it wouldn't just be for the winter, but I don't think we have enough time now for the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Reese?
Yes, I agree with both the other counselors on this. I mean, I believe we should be helping the most vulnerable and of course, uh, keep any tragedies from happening in those severe weather events, but um, I think this is far too much. We have to be conscious of our expenditures and I think as Counselor Gallow suggested, there's a simpler way to go about this and I'd like to, I agree with, we should have a pilot process, looking at the simpler way to do it and using our existing facilities and resources rather than assigning cots and, and food and wifi and a variety of other things. It's just not necessarily in my mind, so. Uh, that's my comment and I won't be voting for the uh, carrying on with this particular direction, but I would be interested in an amendment that asks for a pilot project with something simpler. Thank you.
Counsel Gallow?
Thank you. Um, excuse me, I think there's really not much more to say. I just, uh, with the receiver information, certainly referring this back to staff with some directive I think would be appropriate.
Counsel Gardner, second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if we were, I mean, I would like to see something twenty-four seven. In which case there would have to be cots or some place for people to lie down. And I don't, and they, they can be rented and um, can be pre-arranged. I, I I still, we'd want to have a lot of people in any one of our buildings and not for them not to have a place to at least lie down overnight. So if that, if the expense of that could be investigated, please, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Counsel Gallow, second time?
Yeah, just, just on that point, uh, Counselor Gardner, on, on page two twenty-nine, or ten of fourteen, it does say in terms of equipment. Uh, although the math is, is wrong. Ten foldable cots, ten times a hundred, says it's ten thousand, but I think we all know that's a thousand. Um, so that's kind of the cost of at least ten, ten cots. But I don't know if anyone else wants to speak first. I, I'll, I'll wait, but I, I would like to at least put a amendment. I don't know if it's appropriate or not. I don't think it's too far away from what's, what's in front of us, but it's basically to have staff report back to have a, a pilot project for this winter uh, at one of our facilities. I'd recommend the senior center, but I'd leave it open to, to staff to pick the most appropriate facility with minimum, absolute minimum staff, hopefully volunteers is the preferred route um, and as basic uh, combinations as, as possible.
Did you get that? Seconder? Not yet. Seconder? Counsel Gallow? Any comments or questions on the amendment? Counsel Gardner?
This is a question, I don't know, maybe for the CIO. We could lose, like, last time we lost power on the east side of Young. It could be somewhere else next time. It could be the whole town. Where, where do we have a generator? Um, okay, maybe Ms. McDougal, would that be you? Where do we have a generator?
Ms. McDougal?
Uh, we do have a generator uh, located at the senior center and at the AFLC.
Counselor.
Sure. Okay, that's great.
And JLC, yeah.
And JLC, uh, could, could I also follow up? How long do our generators generate?
Ms. McDougal, do you know the answer to that?
No, I don't. I'd have to look into that.
As long as they have fuel, Counselor.
So um, maybe that's something that could be in the report too because I mean, prepare for the worst. Expect the best and, or whatever that saying is. Thank you.
Yep. Counsel Reese to the amendment.
To do with um, asking a question about whether the town has a, a weather emergency action plan because I think there's some, there's more things than just opening up a center. The action plan says uh, when they're opened up, um, where they're opened up, where the overflows are and a variety of other things. And maybe if we could roll this into an action plan, if we don't have one for weather emergencies, then everybody would know what to do, under what circumstances, and particularly with what Counselor Gardner said, when you have a power outage for an extended period of time, that's a lot of people and it may not go in one place or another. We need, I think we should have that plan. So through you to Ms. McDougal, to wonder whether we have an emergency action plan for weather and if it can be posted and communicated.
So Counselor, we do, we do have a plan. We actually go through uh, I think it's, is it?
I think it's, is it twice or is it twice a year? Three, yeah, we go twice a year, uh, the uh, ELT and as well as anyone that's part of the emergency action team. Gets together at the senior center and we go through, um, and we go through uh, scenarios and. We make sure that we're fully prepared in case something happens in the town, uh. Who's responsible for what. So we're, we're all prepared, we're all ready, uh, in case something was to happen, but I'll let Ms. McDougal expand upon that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, those are also um, municipally declared emergencies. Uh, when there's a storm, weather event, like a power outage, flood. Uh, a significant weather event or storm like that, where it impacts more of our infrastructure. Um, municipal wide. So it's a very different. Action related to what we're, I believe we were talking about with this provision for those in need overnight. Um, so I think it's a different provision. But I could be wrong if I need to clarify that, but that, we have emergency procedures that are in place through our emergency operations center. Um, that our leadership team handles.
Yeah, similar, similar Counselor, and I'll just add to that, similar as to when uh, the power outages happened up to the north. Um, they declared emergencies and other municipalities came to help uh, with uh, making sure that uh, their municipalities. Were uh, were taken care of to the best of their ability. So we would. We would essentially declare an emergency at that point if we got to that, uh, where the head of council would declare that emergency and. Uh, the uh, senior leadership team would uh, come together at the senior center and. And basically all hands on deck to make sure that our town is properly uh.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Kim? I'll, I'll get to, just let me, uh, Counsel Kim, to the amendment, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I fully understand and appreciate and, and I'm. Uh, in favor of protecting our communities most vulnerable, certainly. But I'm wondering, I'd like to confirm that uh, the amendment and the mo- is to establish. A pilot project. Uh, in addition to how directing staff on how this pilot project is going to go about, because usually. Before we initiate any initiative, uh, we know what the variables and factors are. Um, because there might be some variables in there that, that may uh. Change the goalposts in terms of how someone is going to go forward. Uh, with having uh, this initiative or in this case, the pilot project, for instance, um. You know, what are the trigger points in terms of what's going to activate a cold uh? Uh, cold event, or um, this is going to be mixed juice. Um, or is it going to be, uh, you know, all genders? Uh, who's going to provide the, the soft services like social workers or public health or mental health that's going to be, you know, potentially required. Uh, when you're offering these types of services. You know, staff training in terms of any kind of civil liability or uh, insurance or anything of that nature. And, and those things are, are second. Uh, certainly uh. Next to ensuring that our most vulnerable are protected. But just to clarify, uh, whether it's to staff or to Counselor Gallo. Um, is the amendment to? Are we voting on establishing the pilot, pilot project? And staff will come back with information on how it's going to support it? Or is it going, is, is the amendment to identify the variables and then we will go from there?
Counselor, it's, it reads report back unless I'm, I'm wrong. Yes, I can see Counselor Gallo nodding his head. So this, we, we get a report back. So it's not that we're implementing anything at this moment in time. We're just getting a report back. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Thompson? To the amendment?
Amendment. Uh, originally, when the amendment came up, there was a reference to 24 hour. That's, that's now been addressed. Uh, now there's some new wording as well. It really just was around the wording. You know, I didn't necessarily think it reflected what the comments of Counsel Gallo were. Earlier, where he was talking about really just, you know, that period from 11:00 PM to, to 7:00 AM, not necessarily the, the 24 hour concept that was in the report and. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable supporting the new wording that's been published.
Thank you. Counsel Gardner, second time to the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. Yes, I, I'm in favor of this motion, but this response to perhaps some of the things that Counselor Kim is worried about. This is, this is very simple. You provide a place where people go. To get warm. It's not um, the kind of emergency that we had. We had somebody from the region come forward and. Uh, they have a special protocol for, you know, in quotes, or let's say emergencies with a big E. And uh, this is a much simpler thing. We're just trying to keep people warm. And uh, when I visited the warming center at the senior center. I certainly didn't consider myself among the most vulnerable in the community. I just, we didn't have any power and. I ended up going to my sister's in Richmond Hill, but um. You know. If you don't have heat. It, it can affect anybody. So this would just be. Open to the community who needs to stay warm. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, amendment? Call the vote on the amendment, all in favor. Close, that carries back to the main motion as amended. Any further comments, questions? All the vote, all those in favor. Close, that carries. Thirteen point one, Council Reese, you pulled this one. Did you want to move the recommendation? Seconder? Counsel Thompson, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Reese.
Doing this was that I'm still concerned with the small number of people, and I believe it's a small number of people who are typically. Vulnerable because they have. Physical or emotional disabilities and that they are shut-ins for these periods of time and I'm. Although we've had two day, two times at this, two pilots. Um, and we've had a number of complaints and I understand the cost of this. And I've read all of the information. I'm just wondering if we've covered all of the pilot options. That are available to us with respect to eligibility. Um, and the cost of it before we throw the baby out with the bathwater. Um, I'm, I'm on the receiving end of the complaints of people. Who felt that they, the windrows should be cleaned out by eight o'clock so they could get to work or they could get to somewhere else. I think there's a lot of 65-year-old people who would be offended by suggesting that they aren't able to shovel a little bit of snow. Um, so I'm not sure our eligibility requirements are solid enough. And I'd hate to see the um, people who are truly vulnerable not to have an option available for them. I've seen the three different options and I understand what each one of them are. I don't want a big capital investment in. And expensive equipment to do something for a small number of people. But I'm just wondering if through staff, we could, if there's any other options that staff have thought about that would. Provide the services we need for the most vulnerable at a cost that makes sense to us through you, Mayor, probably to Ms. Teen Camp.
Teen Camp?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, certainly staff have done a fair bit of research on, on the issues and. As you said, uh, we've presented everything that we have seen that's viable. Um, changing the eligibility, um, I don't know what you were thinking, whether you're, whether it was increasing the age. To maybe the, you know, over 75 or something. Um, we certainly haven't looked into that or um. Haven't considered that through other municipalities and uh. But from what we've seen, these are options that other municipalities have endeavored um. To provide either through a contracted service, uh, this increased level of uh, equipment that provides a, a. A better snow clearing uh, result. Or um, some of them are actually providing uh, like a stipend to residents to secure their own um, contractor and uh. Then they manage and control when it is completed. Um, so those are the three options that we have looked at, but we could certainly look at something else if, if that's counsel's will.
Counsel.
Um, I would appreciate that because again, anything that would help. I'm not so concerned about the age necessarily because age is no. Indicator of ability or disability. It's, it has to do with their actual ability to do the work that needs to be done. And perhaps it's an opportunity for us to do something from a volunteer perspective on streets and maybe we can help organize that for the most vulnerable. I know what happens on our street, um, but I, I just don't want to hear about someone found in a, in their home. Uh, because they've been shut in and they haven't been able to get out when we could have helped them through some kind of a, a procedure. So. I'm, I'm willing to accept the, the canceling of this because it's uh. Financially prudent to do so. I'm just concerned about those people who are genuinely in need.
Thank you. Counsel Gallo?
Thank you. Um. Yeah, I, I, I understand the report and I. I don't know any operations department anywhere in any municipality or in the speak. In high favor of window clearing because I know it does pose an issue, especially with complaints. And I have had conversations with other municipalities and. Uh, funnily enough, when I was off SAM, had some conversations with other um, colleagues as well and. You know, everybody has a medical appointment or everybody has something important to get to. And whether it holds true or not is one thing. Um, but the reality is, is that you're always going to have people who are going to complain and they're going to have high expectations and that's the way I look at it and I certainly. Do not want to squash a program for a few bad apples. It's going to ruin it for people who actually really do need this service. For people who actually appreciate the guidelines, follow the rules, um, have given accolades. Sure, there's going to be some outliers where. Um, you know, they're not going to be very kind and let's face it, we had a winter. That was like none other in the last 30 or 40 years and even the city of Toronto would say that they had their own council meetings all about. Snow clearing and the services and so forth. This was the year. Uh, where many municipalities were starting to review all their gaps and what they saw. So I wasn't really happy that in the report it said typical because I don't think that was typical. I think that's very cyclical, the way our winters have been. Some winters are, you know, you're lucky you have a plow come by three times a year. Sometimes it's a lot. And I feel like we went through two major extremes with these pilots last year and then this year. Uh, I don't know if there's enough data to really support moving forward, um, what that looks like. Uh, in the past, I know we had some information that was provided to us back in 2018 and it was very expensive back then, but it was really just based on. A full sun window clearing on the entire town. So. This to me, uh, is targeting people over 65 and the most vulnerable seem to be the most appropriate. At the very least that our town could provide and the fact that we are making a subsidy. Uh, available to some people I think is fair. Uh, I'm not interested in canceling this. I don't think it's a fair assessment. I would like to see um, maybe some prolonged data on this. Uh, perhaps if uh, maybe council colleague wants to see an increase on that minimum uh, payment, whether it's 100 to 150 to help offset costs, I'm not sure. But we did talk about the equipment many, many years ago. We did talk about wanting to go in-house. And I just feel like we've been walking around in circles about whether we're contracting this out, kicking it in-house and of course, as we keep talking about it, the price of this keeps getting higher and higher and higher. And I don't think the answer is just to not do it at all. And uh, I, for me, I won't be supporting canceling this. Uh, I would be supportive of continuing this on, at the very least, in a, in a pilot. To collect some data in the next few years to see, because I feel like we've had some two major swings in weather. And I just really don't think it's fair to ruin it for the, for the vast majority of people who actually follow the rules.
Counsel Thompson?
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I share some of the views with, with Counselor Gillan in that I, I do view the last two winters as a bit of an extreme. I, you look at the first one, which was very mild, you look at the second one, and really there was a week there that it was like the never-ending snowstorm and, and everybody was talking about. You know, the snowfall, how much they're shoveling. And so it's, it's hard for me to gauge the effectiveness of the program, knowing. That part of the information we have is really based on that, that week in February. Uh, and the continual snow and the challenges around that. So. I guess what would help me is to get a little bit more data in two aspects of it. We identify the various events and we also say that we had a significant more, number more of complaints uh, in this, this past winter than we did previously. But I'm wondering if we can break this out a bit and look at the complaints and say. Okay, if we look at the first three events, the one in December, the one in January, and the first one in February. What was the reaction from the public like? You know, from the residents have utilized the service. Were they happy? Were the complaints? I know full well, we had a lot of complaints during uh, that, that week in February because, you know, I, I took the calls, I heard from staff as well. But I want to look at some of the other dates in isolation. Secondly, you talk about the total snow accumulation. Uh, for this last winter was in line with past winters and perhaps we can get some of that information of. Previous accumulations over the years because you do identify an issue when it comes to the equipment and the ability to. Uh, move the snow and shovel it up over a certain, a certain height. And so perhaps having some of those other. Uh, pieces of information can help us determine whether or not, I guess, A, you know. The equipment really is a barrier for us to be successful in this endeavor. Uh, and whether or not that needs to be addressed or at least give us a bigger picture around. Um, the potential for success going forward if we choose to repeat it again this year. Uh, and try and get a little bit more data and a little bit more information. So for the moment, I'm, I'm happy to receive it, but I would welcome any more data. Thank you.
Counsel Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. The content of the report doesn't surprise me. Uh, the response from residents certainly doesn't surprise me considering the emails that we received. And considering the amount of snow that we received that week. Um, I don't think very many, you know, window cleaning uh, teams could have done, you know. That much better, but certainly having the right equipment to uh, would have been uh, a big help. You know, we can't control the weather. There's going to be some winters you're going to have, that you're going to have six, seven, eight feet of snow piled up and you're going to need the equipment. There's going to be some winters. Uh, like a couple of years ago where uh, you might uh, only have a few inches to a couple of feet where. The existing equipment uh, uh, might be satisfactory. So I don't see uh, going forward with, with this program as is uh, without new equipment. Um, but that is cost prohibitive. Um, as I've said. Uh, you know, a couple of years ago, a subsidy or a bursary system makes more sense. You look at 468 residents um, that were in the program at $100, that's 46,800 and that's uh. Still less than 52,755 uh, in that cost that was incurred, incurred. And you know, some of the other benefits is that the residents are controlled. They can uh, choose their own contractor, you know, if they have any uh, complaints. Uh, it can be addressed more quickly by people who are professionals in, in this area. And it eliminates uh, you know, the town from having to have a, a 24-hour standard or e- equipment capacity. Um, and certainly avoids capital investment liability, which, which I've mentioned and. Um, certainly we don't have to uh. Administer this program, so. You know, I don't want to eliminate this pilot, you know, maybe we can do uh, another, you know, continue the pilot for another year with a subsidy, but. They hire their own contractor and, you know, if majority don't even like that uh, program, then. You know, maybe we stop it because we've exhausted everything, but I'm not sure how. Uh, you know, more information is great, but I'm not sure, given the unpredictability of the weather. What options would be feasible? For us.
Do you have any other comments, questions? Counsel Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did have a resident who was snowed in, a senior resident who was snowed in and unfortunately. She doesn't live in an area where neighbors help neighbors or possibly. The people within her proximity are also seniors. Um, she knew nothing about the windrow program, nor did her neighbor, who called me to. Tell me that the town wouldn't shovel her out. You know. It's um. It's hard. I saw all the ways in which. The program was, you know, communicated to the public and there. There were many. Maybe in some areas where there are a lot of seniors. I, I don't know. I can't imagine anybody walking from door to door, but uh. Seniors have a different way of interacting with social media. seniors have a different way of interacting with social media or not interacting with social media. But I I do think that we need to try it for one more year. I thank staff for the report. And it's 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 impossible. Windrows and clearing windrows, it's an impossible situation. So it's just such a great challenge. I wanted to make it a little more expensive last year. That wasn't accepted. Maybe that's something we need to do. I see that there were quite a lot of people who were subsidized. But I think there are other people who, you know, can't afford the program and they just can't do the shoveling themselves. So I will be voting to continue it for another year. And certainly, it wasn't a typical winter, at least I hope it wasn't a typical winter to come. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Gillan, second time.
Thank you. I I don't know what the appropriate direction would be, but I certainly want to see this extended for another year. In respect to subsidizing another contractor, I don't know if that would be financially feasible for a lot of people, considering we're talking about a hundred dollars right now, which is tough for a lot of seniors to afford. And I don't know very many external contractors that would just come just to do a window only. Usually, they would just, you would hire them for the winter season to remove snow from your driveway in the windrow. And that costs probably between eight hundred and fifteen hundred dollars for the season. So I doubt that hundred dollar subsidy from the town is going to go very far for anybody who wants that service. Otherwise, they probably would be engaging in that service already. So I for me, I'm not supporting that. But I don't not so sure what the direction would be. But through Mr. Mayor, Miss Teeng Camp, if we wanted to extend that pilot for another year, just to kind of collect another some more data, is that something that we could do?
Miss Teeng Camp.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, certainly, if that's the direction of council, we can extend the pilot for another year.
Councillor.
Great, thank you very much. I I mean, I would like to put forward another year of this pilot. I think it's important that we do collect more data. In the meantime, I do believe that we should be looking at costs for the future for equipment and so forth. But I don't think that we should be sacrificing this pilot in the meantime. So I'm in favor of having some costing for that in addition to that while we're learning through this process. Because eventually, I believe we're going to need that right equipment. So through Mr. Mayor, to I guess the clerk. If I could, I don't know, do I make that amendment?
Sure, what's the amendment?
To extend the pilot project for an extra year and staff report back with costing of right size equipment for future as well.
Is there a second or? I'm looking for a second or not comment. It's an amendment right now because all that was put on the floor was to receive. So it's an amendment to what's on the floor. So I need a second or. Thank you, second. Any comments or questions to the amendment? Councillor Thompson.
Thank you. Perhaps through you to councillor Gillan, is the intent to keep the the cost the same?
I I'm I'm assuming and you you want everything basically exactly the same as it was this year. Yep. And then for staff to come back with a future report on on expenditures and things like that too, yes. Councillor.
Thank you. I I I think my preference is that if council decides to extend it another year, we need to raise the rate.
Councillor Gillan to the amendment. So that was what you were going to say as well? It's not, sorry, there I got, I don't have my microphone set. There you go, you're on.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was going to speak to as well. What's the funding model? And I need to know that before I could support anything. If if we find a different funding model, be it charge more or whatever, whatever, whatever it is, I won't be support of the current model because I don't I don't think ninety one thousand dollar expenditure is appropriate. So through you to someone. Whatever comes forward, will alternative funding models be part of that? To you, Mr. Mayor.
Miss Teeng Camp.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, to continue the program as is for this year, but you'd like some sort of funding model prior to that decision that council presented?
I I would like that, yes. I I don't, I won't be in favor of spending ninety one thousand dollars, I'll tell you that right now. But if I I like the program and if there's a different way of funding it, either we we share it amongst everyone, the full costs, something else. And and because I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, through you, Mr. Mayor, part of the hiring, if I remember correctly, was we were going to hire, and I think it was about two hundred thousand dollars worth of hiring. But those people were going to be also used in the summer for different programs. So all that needs to be explained and flushed out properly, however we go forward. Because, you know, they were hired for this project in addition to other projects. So if this project no longer exists, what's the plan for those people? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Miss Teeng Camp.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the staff that were hired to engage the windrow program are seasonally employed. So they are on a contract. So we do not have them three sixty five, they're not full time permanent. So if this program ceased and desist, then they would no longer be employed with the town for that contract.
Councillor.
Is that a change from the original proposal? I believe, no, that I'm mixing it up with something else. We're going to cut trees in the summer or something else.
Mr. Seale, if you want to expand, yes.
To you, Mr. Mayor. No, they were going to cut trees because if they weren't doing windrows and they were sitting around, we would use them to advance other maintenance issues.
During, during the winter.
During the winter.
Got it, got it.
But if the program could stop, then we wouldn't have them. And we'd have to go back to our our usual staffing and usual timing for those maintenance activities.
Councillor.
As long as that's clear and whatever comes forward and some alternative options on funding this, I I'll be in support of it.
So far, I go to councillor Reese. Councillor Gillan, may I suggest, because what I'm hearing is is we got two on the side that have some concern as far as the funding aspect of it. How about to continue the pilot and for staff to report back in September before we implement the pilot with funding options for council to decide? Something, something like that. Does that work for everybody? Yeah? Okay. Councillor Reese, go ahead.
Comment has to do again about eligibility for this. Last year, we had something to do with low income thresholds. And I want to make sure those are in there because I think there's a lot of people who are quite, they pass the test with respect to sixty five. But they're still enjoying this. And I think we need to step back a little bit on that. And also the ensuring that they're truly disabled in one way or another. So I just tighten it up at the front end. I think that's going to help the funding model significantly as well. So I hope that's coming back in the report through you.
Thank you. Mr. Seale, did you, sorry. And I'm just trying to get the wording clarified, but yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just I think, at least from my mind and maybe for the staff as well. I'm not sure like exactly what the expectation is for another funding model. Because this is a program that costs a lot of money. We we, you know, we put a fee in and the numbers went way down. So I think we need a little more guidance about what like, do you want us to come back with a cost neutral thing? Or because like, I just don't see the logic of a new funding thing without some, what is the aim of the new funding thing? More people that would use the service, less cost overall? Like, these things are separate from each other in terms of, you know, how we achieve. So so just saying, I just don't want to come back and disappoint everybody in September with a report that says, well, you could, you know, go back to the old model and then you'll get a thousand people and the cost would be really crazy last winter. Like, it would have been really not like it's, you know, I realize there's a lot of moving parts, but I I just think we need a little more direction about what your expectations are for a new funding model for something that is, you know, never going to be cost recovered, first of all, I don't think, under any of the models. So, you know, if you could consider that, it would be helpful. Certainly, I think for the final report in September.
Councillor Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess that's kind of my comment is that the motion in front of us says we're going to continue it. But then really, it's subject to us agreeing on what that funding model is. And I'm not sure if there's going to be agreement there. So I don't know how we can say we're going to continue it, but yet let's figure this out down the road. So I'm all for getting a report back and having those options around how we're going to support this program and then making the decision. But that's the key piece that's missing for me. It's great to say we're going to continue it, but I I don't hear any agreement around the table on how this program is going to be funded at this point in time. And should we not have that consensus come September? Well, then what happens? We've sent out a message saying we're continuing it, but now we're we're not continuing it? Let's let's get this report back and and perhaps, I guess, to our CAO's point, council can give some direction to staff in terms of what they're looking for from a almost cost recovery perspective or from alternative funding sources. And they can provide us with some options and then we can decide. But I don't think I can personally say I want to continue the windrow pilot program for twenty five, twenty six season without fully knowing what the cost is going to be at this point in time. It's undetermined.
Mr. Seale, second time.
Thank you. I probably should know this, but is is was any of this part of the base budget?
Nope.
Zero. I'm I'm I haven't changed my mind. If there's no alternative funding sources other than, you know, well, I'll leave it up to staff, but if whatever comes up in September, then I can make my decision. I can tell you that for me, spending ninety one thousand dollars is a no go. And maybe that's a no go.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Gillan.
Thank you. I'm I'm just trying to wrap my head around the language because we're all talking about the language. For me, I know I want to have the windrow pilot to continue on. How that happens, I'm not sure. I certainly don't want to leave the vulnerable, holding the bag at the end of, at the end of the day. But if it makes councillors more comfortable to direct staff to report back for various funding models to consider, continue on with the windrow pilot program, then I'm happy with that. At the end of the day, I think we all want to see what that looks like. I'm just not ready to say an absolute no to the program at this time. And you're right, we are missing that piece. So if the language needs to be changed that way, I'm happy to do that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, staff be directed to report back on the various funding model for for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six season?
To consider, continue on, to consider continuing, continue going on with the windrow program.
For the twenty twenty five.
So it's a consideration.
Consideration, okay.
Second or, okay, but make it a friendly. Thank you. So so council, if we can give us some, at least some clear direction, it doesn't maybe necessarily need to be in the wording. But if maybe we can let staff know, do we want this to be full cost recovery or as close as possible to cost recovery? Do we want it to remain at the hundred dollar charge? Do we want it like?
I mean.
I think staff needs some. I would, I I think that we should be letting them know right now because I think everyone has an idea in their head with what they would like to see. And I think staff need to have a bit of that understanding of what this body sitting at this table want to see moving forward, whether they're comfortable with as is, or if they would like to see that caught full cost recovery or anywhere in between. I think that they need to know that.
I think personally, I think that we should see all different, oh, whether it's full cost recovery, partial cost recovery, minimal cost recovery. I know at some point, I think it's actually going to cost us a little bit in order to to run it. But I want to see what those numbers look like. And I know costs have changed a lot, so I want to see what that looks like. It's been a while since we've looked at that. All we saw was one little chart, hundred, two fifty, whatever it was. I'd I'd like to see some of that change.
Councillor Gillan, you're right, but I'm going to let you because this is, yeah, please. Yeah, yeah, I asked for suggestions, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to see full cost recovery. And and if the numbers stay the same, and I suspect they probably won't, but ninety one thousand divided by four hundred sixty eight is a hundred and ninety four dollars each.
So back to that two hundred that was originally proposed.
That should be one of the options, absolutely.
So we would like to see full cost recover, anywhere from full cost recovery to basically
That's going to
we're paying everything.
It's going to vary clearly because because the the cost of the program, you know, may may we may end up ten people that want it and then and then what? But
So I'm just going to, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to go out on a bit of a limb here and and Sarah can just shake her head and know when I'm going too far straight. At ninety one thousand divided by that to get you that number, we don't have staff for ninety one thousand. We need more money to have them in the building available to do the ninety one thousand or whatever the number is. Or are we okay at ninety one thousand to cover it all?
Miss Teeng Camp.
That's what it costs us.
The ninety one thousand is what it cost us this year. And that was the seasonals that were employed for the program, the five percent of their wage. Right. Yeah, the five percent of the time that was spent. That is included in the ninety one thousand along with the uplift of full time staff that helped out during those high times during February when we had the extreme events. So it's a combination of both those resources brings us to the ninety one thousand for the snow events, for the windrows for this year.
Seal.
So I just I just want to make sure that ninety one, that includes all the tree trimming that was done and so on, all those up. No, that's that's part I'm getting at. With ninety one thousand, we don't have those staff sitting at the J O C. We need more than that to have them there sitting for the winter, like to do the tree trimming and to do whatever else. Or is that, or is that, was that included in the ninety one? Was that ninety one that we get?
Miss Teeng Camp.
The ninety one thousand is for just the windrow implementation. So the true cost of having those staff on is greater than that ninety one thousand.
Yeah, I believe Miss Teeng Camp's at five percent, right? Is that what you said, five percent cost?
It's a different
Anyways, Mr. Seale, you can finish up and we'll move on. You're done? Okay. Councillor Gillan, did you still?
You're done?
Skip the numbers.
Skip the numbers? All right. Thank you. Now, so we we also have the option of just receiving this at this moment in time. And when we come back to council, we can speak to staff, get some more information also individually and put something on the floor to give proper direction as we would like to see at council. That's fine, I'm just, I'm just giving you guys some suggestions. All right. I'll call the vote. All who's in favor. Oh. Back to the main motion as amendment. Councillor Reese, did you still want to speak? No? Councillor Gardner, did you want to speak still?
Mr. Mayor, the author of the report would, I assume, would really like to add some information that might help us.
Did you have a question for him?
Well, he's not at the mic, so I can't ask him.
You had a question for him, I would ask him to come down. But if you don't have a question, then there's no point in me bringing him down.
I would like to know what it is that we are, we're missing something. There's, there's, we're, there's something in the way we're thinking or what we're saying that seems to be missing. And I would like to ask him if he would like to add any information.
Matt, do you know what what what's missing?
It's like similar.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have much to add beyond what Sarah's just to clarify, though. The eighty one thousand was the cost to hire three seasonals this past winter. The future cost is difficult to predict simply because the cost, as councillor Gillan pointed out, will be dependent on the participants. So if you So if you raise the cost, you might get lower participants and you're kind of putting the cart before the horse. If we wait until September to figure that out and then try to set a costing that might increase and then you have lower registration, but Sarah was spot on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Yallow, to back to the main motion, just like that.
Thank you. I mean, we can go at this all day long, but in really good ideas, we can put a cap that we're comfortable with, which we can establish a cost if we have a cap and no more. And we can establish a price and do it that way. I'm sure there's staff can figure out different ways of accomplishing that.
Seeing no other comments, questions, a call and vote, all those in favor. Posed, Carrie's health break. Ten minutes. Okay, counsel, let's get back. Please. Four. So we got 14.1. We had, we have a presentation from Janice Ashworth. Janice, welcome. We're just turning it on one sec.
Okay.
There it is.
There it is. So thanks for inviting me to come speak about our feasibility study for the home retrofit loan program. My name is Janice Ashworth. I'm with Dunskey Energy and Climate Advisors. And we've been working with municipalities here in Aurora and across the country on these kinds of programs. And we commend you for your initiative on taking this, on looking into this. Okay, I'm pressing the right button. Thank you. Okay, so for this study, we looked at the feasibility of a municipal loan program to encourage homeowners to implement energy and emissions reductions upgrades in their homes. The primary objective for this was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And the secondary objective is to enable broad participation across all residents. Today, we will review the results of the feasibility study, seek your direction to continue with the program design study and gather your input for the next stage. Oh, sorry, went back. There we go. Okay. So across Aurora, homes produce about 37% of greenhouse gas emissions. And upgrading them is critical to meeting your greenhouse gas reduction targets of 80% by 2050. The rate of home upgrades is about, is less than 1% per year currently and would need to be about 4% per year, about 800 units annually in order to meet that target that you've set for 2050. When we spoke to homeowners, they suggested that the main, their main barriers are lack of knowledge as well as the upfront costs. Now, a bit about the housing stock. In Aurora, most homes are low-rise detached and, and built since the 1980s. There are some sections of town that are, that are older homes, however. When we look at the emissions profile, we see that most emissions from homes are coming from the use of natural gas for space heating and for water heating. Municipalities have a few, sorry, a few unique tools at their disposal to encourage emissions reductions in homes. Firstly, they can offer low-interest loans tied to properties through a mechanism called the local improvement charge. Secondly, they can implement bylaws to require energy labeling of homes similar to what we heard from TAF around the benchmarking requirements for commercial buildings. That can also be done at the home scale. And they can also require emissions standards or emissions performance standards through bylaws of existing buildings. Thirdly, they can leverage their trusted reputation and connections to promote desired outcomes. There are a number of existing programs from the federal and provincial levels of government and related entities that are available to help homeowners. The municipal program would be designed to leverage and dovetail with those existing programs rather than to replicate. We did a homeowner survey and homeowners told us that Aurora residents generally are not aware of many of those existing programs. And they could benefit from education and awareness tools as well as energy coaching services to build their confidence in the retrofit solutions. We also spoke to a number of external stakeholders, including York Region, Newmarket, Enbridge, Elektra, the Senior Center, Contractors Associations, the Environmental Advisory Committee. And we learned from these consultations that many, there's many initiatives in development already. So the towns program should take those into consideration and be built with collaborations for efficiency. We spoke to some town staff as well and we, and found that there's limited capacity internally to deliver a loan program. We also learned that the town is, faces difficulties to, to secure low-cost capital. As a result, we will be recommending working with an external delivery agent as a delivery model to overcome both of those challenges. One concept to be aware of when thinking about home improvements is this concept of dead-end pathways. So the, it's important to keep in mind these types of concern, this concern when you're designing a program. A dead-end pathway is one that gets you towards your goal, but can't get you all the way there. So it looks like you're making progress, but then you're stalled. A common example for, in this case, is natural gas tankless hot water heaters or condensing gas furnaces that are more efficient than their alternatives, than the standard equipment, but still rely on a fossil fuel for their, for their output. And so they're not on the pathway to a full emissions reduction. In our study, we reviewed four types of loan program models, one being a private lending model through, which would be a collaboration with a financial institution. Loans with, through energy utilities such as Elektra or Enbridge. And then municipal loans using the local improvement charge mechanism, either delivered in-house or with a third-party delivery agent. We landed on that last one, the third-party delivery model, being the most feasible for Aurora after consultations with all those stakeholders. Regardless of the loan model used, offering market support services is a recommended tool to help homeowners implement effective energy upgrades at home. These can include a number of different services or activities such as outreach and education, energy coaching, home energy ratings or labels, retrofit roadmaps, an online platform and enabling connections to contractors, bulk procurement, rebates and building emissions bylaws. All of those are external from a loan program itself, but can be complementary. We then came up with three potential programs to explore in more detail in the program design phase. Each have pros and cons, and their success will really depend on funding and partners available. The most plausible is a loan program delivered by a third-party fund, agency, which, and funded by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. However, currently, the F C M funding window is closed and the mod, this model will require us to explore alternative funding options in order to make that feasible. We then modeled the range of costs to deliver each of the programs over a four-year term. You can see the loan portion, the loan capital portion for the program delivery cost ranges from 300,000 all the way up to 4 million over four years. The operational costs are typically less than half of that. And the market support elements can really also range, they're quite on a, on a, on a spectrum depending Um, and the market support elements can really also range. They're quite on us, on a, on a spectrum depending on which, um, options the municipality would choose to implement. Um, and those can range from again, three hundred to thousand up to about two million over four years. Some examples of other municipalities delivering similar programs in the region include, uh, Guelph, which offers an in-house loan program using that local improvement charge mechanism. They were, they received funding through FCM. Newmarket, who is currently, uh, awaiting their funding application approval from FCM, they would be using a third party delivery model similar to the one that we've kind of zeroed in on, um, if they're successful with that application. Durham Region, who has attempted, um, a private lending model with the FCM funding, but has ultimately reverted it to an in-house LIC loan program because their, their delivery, um, their initially model was not successful or not, there was not much uptake. And Sudbury, who's just offering a market support, uh, program and using the funding that they received from the federal government under the Housing Accelerator Fund to, um, to deliver that. Uh, we looked at the impacts and we, we identified that a loan program could result in up to seventy percent energy savings per home and ninety-four percent emission savings, really depending on which measures are selected by the homeowner. We expect that approximately sixty homes per year would participate, um, in the loan program. And that again can range really depending on which market supports are provided and how much, um, you know, how attractive the program is. As well as what happens with some of the external programs from the federal and provincial government. So this feasibility study was really phase one. Um, the next step pending this council's approval is a detailed design study in which we would look at more, in more granularity at some of the funding options and some of the, um, and, and the rec, the ultimate recommendation back to council. And then the town could use that, a final report to seek additional funding partners and, and build collaborations. That's, that's it from me. Any, I'd welcome any of your questions.
Thank you, Janice. Um, council, the recommendation is that the report be received and to the council endorsed the home energy, trough at loan program feasibility study and direct staff to move forward with the program design study. Did someone want to move the recommendation? Counselor Galen, second, second. Counsel Thompson, comments, questions to the presentation or to the report? Counsel Scott?
Thank you. I'm trying to wrap my head around the costs of this program. It says under, uh, in page, uh, two ninety-eight of our agenda, uh, local improvement charge. It says the last sentence, it benefits municipalities by connecting the cost of specific infrastructure projects directly to the properties that benefit from them and avoid the need to fund all projects through general taxation. Um, I'm not sure what the reference is necessarily, but there's, there's a financial implication. There's a budget authority of a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Are, are we looking to to spend, I'm not sure what amount for the next phase? Is FCM paying for the next phase and we'd fund the final design through you, Mr. Mayor?
Janice, did you want to answer that?
Yep.
Funding for the next phase has been pre-approved already by the FCM pending approval from committee on, or council on the first, uh, on this feasibility study. So that funding has been allocated to you already to continue the work if you accept the feasibility study results.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, what are the next steps and, and the financial implications of the next steps?
Janice?
Natalie, are you looking to come down? Okay, Natalie will take these questions.
Natalie, welcome.
So the first phase has been, um, under the approved budget. And so is the second phase as a provisional work. So both phases have already been, um, under the approved budget and FCM is providing funding for both phases, you know, to support, uh, the projects.
Counselor.
And so to what extent is FCM, um, supporting?
Natalie?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I believe it's about eighty percent.
Okay, so what, through you, Mr. Mayor, what's remaining in terms of, uh, if we move forward with this step, there's a third step, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, and, and is there a financial implication to that?
Natalie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think the, the third step you're referring to is actually funding an entire program. So, um, we're just completing phase one. After tonight, if we get the, um, program, or the feasibility study endorsed, we would then move on to the detailed, uh, design study, which is, uh, like I said, approved, uh, already, um, in the budget. And then that detailed design would come with a third phase costing breakdown. Um, and we'll come back to council for, for approval to move forward.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, that third phase would identify the cost to implement the program?
No.
Identify the costs, um, more detailed. Yeah, the phase two and then come to council with those. Yes, phase three would be the funding and moving forward into the program.
Is, is the intent for a full cost recovery or will there be costs?
We will look into that in the detailed design study. So there'll be different funding options, um, that we're going to be looking at. Um, of external funding opportunities, partnerships, collaborations with other groups, um, or other municipalities.
Okay, so for now, the next phase is fully funded or fully budgeted for, uh, in the, the current budget, the twenty twenty five budget.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Gardner?
Um, so you did that very fast. There was a lot of information. Okay, so, uh, I thought FCM wasn't, is this new funding that FCM is giving? Because it says in the chart that it's that that funding from FCM is finished. So is this a new amount of money that FCM is committing?
No.
So through you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Um, so the, for the feasibility study and the detailed design, that portion of FCM funding has already been approved and worked with, um, FCM and that's already set. It's the funding, the program is now closing, um, that third phase where we're looking to fund in the actual program for implementation. The capital portion of the program, um, that's the piece that, um, Janice had mentioned is closing and phasing out this year.
Counselor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, again, is there money in that program? Is there still money for us to access?
Uh, it's, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the program has not formally closed. It's closing at the end of this year. Um, there's still, uh, in theory, possibility for us to, um, try to seek it. But the conversations from FCM, um, is, is at the point where they're closing up the program, um, and they're, or, um, overcommitted, what was the word that's, oversubscribed, is the word? Yeah, but there are other funding opportunities that we are hoping to seek, um, outside of FCM. So that's where we would go seek that, um, in the detailed design part of the project.
Counselor?
So, um, are you saying, I, I think Counselor Gallo is asking, at the end of the day, what funding is required from the town?
Natalie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you mean for the second, uh, part or for the capital, uh, implementation? Okay, um, so for that, we, we don't know at this point because we need to go into the detailed design to seek those opportunities, uh, figure out, uh, any collaboration from other municipalities that we could work with, reduce, um, some of those, um, costs by, through collaboration. But we, that is going to be, uh, investigated, um, in the next phase. So we won't be able to say at this point, um, what the cost to the town would be.
So, uh, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, so right now we have the money to do, to get up to a certain point. And at that point, you will be coming back to us and telling us what the options are, whether there's outside funding or what it would cost the town.
Natalie?
Exactly. We will come in, uh, with a detailed cost, uh, implications in the next phase.
Well, then we have nothing to lose by doing this and maybe something important to gain. Thank you.
Good, Counsel Galen?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much for all the hard work that you guys have put into this. I know this all started with our energy demand plan and it's been a long time coming. Uh, I know one, some of the things that we've identified way back then was on energy and getting that buy-in for homes to go to retrofit because that is one of the major components, um, and seeing those heat maps to see where it actually, where the, uh, major change needs to occur. So this is that one step forward. And it is nice to see at FCM, the Green Municipal Fund was ramping up their, uh, financial models and funding models for municipalities to apply for. So I'm certain that's probably where you're, um, grabbing these funds. And I see in the financial implications, it does state that in phase two programming that it will outline the financial implications of the next steps moving forward. And I think that's where we're at. We just need to have council approval tonight to accept the phase that we're doing today. And this is our update. And I just want to say thanks a lot. Say, thanks so much.
Any other comments, questions? Call a vote, all those in favor. Post that carries, thank you. Fourteen point three, Counsel Gardner, you pulled this, did you want to move the recommendation? Want to move it?
Um. No, I don't.
Someone want to move the recommendation? Fourteen point three.
So this is.
Counselor Galen, thank you. Seconder.
Traffic calming on Heathwood Heights.
Seconder. Counselor Kim, thank you. Counselor Gardner, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was at this meeting, there wasn't much discussion, uh, among the committee because, uh, the warrants just weren't met and they weren't met by a lot. Um, but there are certain situations. I mean, I know Tammerack is being used as a, a byway. And I know Heathwood Heights, they've got a, a hill and a big curve. Um, there may be some areas where we need to have other parameters on this. There's not many residents who come forward. A lot of residents complain about the speed of cars, but very few come forward to say that they feel unsafe. And, um, so I don't know. Through you, I guess to Mr. Ramuno? Or is it? Do the, does Michael Bat work out of? Um, oh, it's Michael Hahn that did the report, but, um, I think we, I think as a council, we need to take it seriously when residents come forward and say they feel unsafe. And, uh, I don't know what the solution is, but I think we should try something other than the warrants because the warrants, um, I think we should listen to how the residents feel. So through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, Mr. Ramuno, do you have any ideas?
Mr. Ramuno, you have any ideas?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, the Counsel, uh, Gardner, you're correct. I mean, assessment was conducted, didn't meet the warrants. But, you know, we're in council's hands. If you wanted to direct us to implement traffic calming measures, uh, you know, we've done that in the past, uh, upon council's direction.
Counselor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think you just said no.
I think you just said it's up to us sitting here.
Yeah, you don't have any further ideas. Um, well, I'm, uh, although I voted in favor of this at the, at the, uh, meeting, um, I don't think it's good enough just to ignore what the residents in the area feel. So I will vote against this.
Counsel Reese?
And my question is similar, but, um, are these warrants, um, eventually described, that prescribed? Or is it something that's, uh, local? Could you help me about the, uh, genesis of these warrants? Because like Counselor Gardner, I think we have the warrants. And, you know, when you look at volume of traffic, that doesn't, that doesn't really suggest the speed and the danger and all the other types of things. So maybe there needs to be a review of this. So through you to someone, maybe Nancy or whoever is responsible for this to help us where this came from and whether there's any amendments to the warrants that can be made.
Mr. Ramo?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I can ask staff to come down and explain the, uh, the assessment criteria, but I think it's based on, uh, provincial, uh, traffic manuals. But, uh, either Nancy or, uh, Michael, come down, please.
Nancy?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Reese. So, um, it is in our policy. We have a traffic management, um, policy. That's where the warrants, uh, reside. Um, but we prepared that policy based on legislation. So using like OTM book seven and, uh, different traffic management policies that are, that are being used currently, uh, provincially and also looking at other municipalities to come up with that warrant analysis.
Counselor?
So are they or are they not amendable? Can, can they be changed to suit circum, circumstances? I, I appreciate the ones that are there now and they've used, they've been used very effectively, but there are circumstances where they're not. And I'm wondering if they're amendable or if we can do as was suggested here, maybe with the, from Counselor Gardner, through you to Nancy.
Nancy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yep, certainly we could look at them and looking at how we could, um, assess them and then, um, come forward with some other options available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Galen?
Thank you. Um, I didn't know that we could amend those. I've looked at those, uh, guidelines as our, our way of making decisions around the table about the traffic calming. Cause I do know it's something that when we do implement them, it's really hard to remove and we've done that in the past. And, uh, it, it certainly backfired. So I understand and appreciate the process in place. Um, I do recollect, I don't recollect anybody here, uh, delegating about Heathwood. Um, but I was surprised to see it here just because I know that I was one of the first people to bring, uh, that to council uh, way back in the day, uh, many, many years ago, lived on that street for a long, long time. And that resulted in the stop sign and some traffic calming on the longer part. But back then it was, you know, we had reports from police officers. It was a very long egregious process. It took two years of knocking on doors and getting consensus and talking with staff. And, um, I, I just, I'm looking at this report and it doesn't even meet fifty percent of the threshold. And so what we're conceding today, I just don't, I, I just feel like, um, like why have any kind of rules at all or any threshold? If we're not even meeting fifty percent, we're talking between fifteen hundred and eight thousand vehicles per day. I'm just speaking on Heathwood in particular, and it says two hundred and twenty-nine. That's a very low percentile on our threshold. Uh, also with the speed limits over, over fifteen kilometers over, seven kilometers was the, I, I guess the average. So again, it's like fifty percent. So at what point of that threshold are we going to give? Me and anybody can come up the street and decide that they want some sort of traffic calming. So we have to really decide whether or not we're going to adhere to the policies we have in place. I do know that we have made some council changes on thresholds that maybe, you know, one or two over be close to that fifteen K or relatively close, at least within eighty to ninety percent of that minimum volume. And maybe we'll have that conversation, but I just don't see any value having a conversation where it doesn't even meet even, um, it's forty percent, thirty percent. I, I, I'm, I'm going to support Sash's recommendation on this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Call the vote, all those in favor. Post that carries, thank you. Fifteen point two, Counsel Gallo, would you like to move this? You, Seconder. Counsel Reese, go ahead, Counsel Gal.
Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's basically asking, um, and I know we've gotten some information, but, um, a full accounting of, uh, the properties at one five, one five, seven, one five, one six, five, and one five, one seven, one, uh, Young Street. accounting of the properties at 15157, 15165 and 15171 Young Street. From basically the acquisition costs, the rental income, operating maintenance, any capital investments made to date. A review to the extent we can of the occupancy status and the leasing arrangements. And basically, I would probably, I don't know, it's not in there, but add, you know, any capital expenditures that we're, that we're expecting to have. I know there's some roofing stuff that we need to deal with. And have a full financial report on, on that property.
Any other comments, questions? Counsel Reese.
Yeah, the other thing that I don't know if it's in here or not, you have legal and professional fees. So does that in your motion, Counselor Gallow, does that include any lawsuits or pending lawsuits or payouts from those lawsuits? Is that what you're considering with the legal and professional fees?
Counsel Gallow. Yep. Counsel Gallow says yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it.
Counselor Gardner.
Thank you. I, I missed what you said is, did you say also pending, any pending? Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor. Post that carries. 15.3, Councilor Gallow, you want to move this one? You, seconder. Counsel Reese, go ahead, Counsel Gallow.
Thank you. I'm just going to go through the whereas is just because this one's a little bit more difficult, I'd say. Whereas many residents and small businesses in the town of Aurora continue to face significant financial challenges due to inflation, rising interest costs and the cost of living pressures. And whereas municipalities have a responsibility to support communities during difficult economic times by practicing fiscal restraint and ensuring accountability. And whereas the unemployment rate in Ontario has reached, has recently increased to 7.8%. And whereas an estimated 33,000 Ontario jobs have been lost as a result of terrorists. And whereas unemployment leads to reduced consumer spending, which results in reduced provincial revenue and therefore reduce provincial funding to municipalities and ultimately uncertain risk in municipal budgets. And whereas a 0% tax increase for the 2026 fiscal year would provide much needed relief to households and help local businesses stabilize in a still recovering economy. And whereas it is essential to maintain core services and infrastructure while funding initiatives, innovative ways to reduce costs, defer non-essential capital purchase and increase operational efficiencies. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved, the mayor be requested to prepare a draft 2026 operating and capital budget based on a zero municipal tax, property tax increase and to be it further resolved that the mayor be requested to not to reduce service levels in the 2026 budget. And be it further resolved that the request, that the requests of the mayor also include the 1% increase for fiscal strategies, which funds capital reserves be funded from a tax rate, tax rate stabilization fund estimated to be 630,000. And further be resolved that the mayor, as part of the 2026 budget request, that staff identify and recommend. I won't read all the points. They're there. And then finally, be it further resolved, the council affirm its commitment to fiscal responsibility and economic support for residents and that this motion be circulated to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario for their awareness.
Any other comments, questions? Second. Yeah, I got a second. Sorry. Counselor Gardner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've thought about this a lot, discussed it a lot. I I understand the need and I think it is great. We do have money in the reserve fund, but I would only support it on the condition that this sack, this budget for 2526 would only draw from the tax rate stabilization reserve one time. Have to be understood that this is not a continuing strategy because we can't do it. And we need that stabilization fund to be strong. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Winry Van Kessel. It's estimated to be 6,000, 630,000. I think it might be, is it closer to 640 now?
Ms. Winry Van Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's roughly around 638, so closer to 640, the 1% fiscal strategy.
640. And I think from speaking with you about this, we would like to stay around the $600,000 mark. Or my, okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Winry Van Kessel. What, what is a comfortable balance for you to have in this count? Is it based on a percentage? How do you calculate it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, are you talking about the balance of the tax stabilization reserve?
Yes.
So the balance of this tax stabilization reserve has a target balance of 10% of the tax levy. So that's about just over $6 million. So that's where our target balance is. And that gets funded by surpluses resulting from the operating budget. So if there's a year where we do not have a surplus, then no additional funding goes in there. Right now, the tax stabilization fund is sitting at its target, plus a little bit extra for some of these other planned draws that were included in the 26 budget.
Counselor.
Thank you for all. I completely misspoke. So it's sitting at 6,400,000, close to $6,400,000. Is that through, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Winry Van Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would need to look it up to get an exact figure, but it's in that neighborhood.
Counselor.
Thank you. And the intent would be to take 1%, about $630,000 out of it. Thank you. Just that I, for clarification, I'm a smoke, misspoke about that. Anyway, I, I am in favor of this, but as I said, a one time that the residents would understand that is a one time draw from the tax rate stabilization reserve. Thank you.
Counsel Thompson.
Thank you. Through you to Mrs. Winry Van Kessel. On that point, with regards to funding the capital reserve contribution from the tax rate stabilization, what is the impact in the long term?
Ms. Winry Van Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So if the funding for 2026 comes from the tax rate stabilization in that year, that single year of the 10-year plan would be okay. The challenge becomes in our planning for the remaining nine years of the 10-year plan. If there would be a plan to catch up to basically levy that 600 and some thousand dollars in the future to catch up to what the planned contributions were before. Or if those are no longer available and it's not part of that base levy. Because when we do levy the taxes, it becomes part of the base levy and it becomes part of that annual contribution that we put towards a lot of our asset management reserves. So if we don't plan a catch up for it, then that means in the future years, so the remaining nine years of the 10-year plan, that 630,000 comes out and that mean, that could impact service levels for asset management for capital.
Counselor.
Thank you again. Through you to Mrs. Winry Van Kessel. Do you have a sense of over that 10-year horizon, what that total impact would be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it'd be roughly about 5.8 million.
Counselor.
So in other words, if we made this choice this year, we'd either face a roughly a $6 million deficit over the tenure period or have to increase the cash to capital contribution greater than the 1% for the subsequent years to catch up. Is that correct? Through you, Mrs. Winry Van Kessel.
Ms. Winry Van Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct. And until we reach that catch up, we'd need to either reduce capital plans or make some adjustments through other reserve opportunities.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you. I guess, just in general, with regards to item four within the motion, which talks about, you know, asking staff to identify and recommend various measures in which to mitigate the tax increase. You know, I, I think it's fair to say that we're all concerned with trying to minimize the tax increase every year, not just this year, but, but every year. We've asked staff on numerous occasions over my years at this table and many of the other councillors around this table have done it as well. To always look at the spending, the expenditures, projects to ensure that they are not so much discretionary, but musts. And, and I know that in looking at older budget reports, they've identified that, you know, the reason why we were able to keep the tax increase, whatever it was, to 3% that year, it identified savings or initiatives that we chose not to go forward with in order to meet those targets and goals. But, you know, I'd like to hear confirmation from our CIO in terms of the budget process and the work that he and the rest of staff do with regards to ensuring that we are able to deliver a budget that is fiscally responsible and ensures that we're trying to minimize the impact of the residents every year, not just this year.
Cial.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, staff are continually doing many of the items that are covered under the fourth section. It's not that we apply whatever the tax increase is universally across the, across all budget lines. We attempt to live within that limit in spite of the fact that things like benefits, costs, lots of our contract renewals, as new contracts come up for some of the services we outsource, the emergency services, wages in some cases. Those things all exceed the amount of inflation that's in the budget. And so we look for other areas within the organization to either not have an increase or to decrease the cost in order to, to cover those costs that we have no, no real option on when those costs exceed inflation. The in terms of reduced discretionary spending and hiring freezes, I mean, we haven't had hiring freezes in the long term. They don't tend to work out. But we, we will within a certain department, for example, delay hiring. We've looked at combining some job descriptions at times, changing the job descriptions when there's a new vacancy. And the individual discretionary spending is, is, we've been fortunate enough that we've been able to live within our budgets and, and generate a small surplus in the 10 years that I've been here every year. And that allows us to just sort of concentrate at the departmental level when a department seems to be going over budget in an area, there's often reduced discretionary spending within the department. It's never had to be a complete, you know, program across the organization because we haven't faced looming deficits for the year end. The capital projects are all managed by the asset management, are phased and planned within the asset management plan. Certainly, I guess we could relook at that and slow some things down. With respect to the grant funding, cost sharing, council will remember that they approved the hiring of a staff person specifically to focus on grants because we know there's more out there. That person will come on stream July, as per the budget, July 2025 was, I think, when the funding for that salary takes effect as approved in the last budget. And there's many things where we're, through technology, we're, and we continue to try to make service delivery more efficient. With respect to the reserves and the reserve fund allocations, that that's brought to council all the time to tune that up, to reflect the current and emerging needs of the organization. And we've already had some discussions about some of the reserves and moving some of those around for the future. That doesn't really impact the levy as long as we're not over drawing those reserves. And then budget impact, engaging the public, we do engage the public. It's been something we've, we admittedly had limited success with. There seems to be a certain apathy out in the public about our local budget. We had a number of budget input sessions where nobody would attend. And so we stopped doing those. But our communications group has gone out and proactively done information sessions and tried to do surveys and get people involved. And we will continue to do that as well.
Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you for confirming what, you know, we all know that every effort is made to try and ensure that we are looking at every expenditure to ensure a reasonable tax increase. But I'll, I'll leave that aside for the moment. I just want to go back now to the first clause, 0% property tax, because it's been talked about at this table before and, and we've seen it in other places. And, you know, COVID is a good example, that during the COVID years, there were a number of municipalities in the GTA that looked to reduce their, their, their property tax increases. One did 0%, some of them did less than 1%. And in every instance, they had multiple years of high rates. In one case, it was 6%, another one, it was three years of 5%. So just because you have 0% in one, one year, there will be a catch up. We saw it many years ago in Aurora and you've seen it time and time again in other municipalities what have tried to do 0%. It's not sustainable and it just forces higher rates down the road. And you can look at what Richmond Hill did. You can look at King, you can look at EG, you can look at others and their rates are all published. And over the last four years, if you combine their rates, even though they had in one cases zero and another 0.75, their total collective tax rates were higher than what we've done in the last four years. We'd established a policy around how we want to do our budget so that we have a reasonable tax increase that ensures that we're being prudent, that we're being fiscally responsible, that we're looking at all of these things, but delivering the best level of service at the least possible cause, cost. And so, you know, I, I don't support 0% tax increase because just like we heard with the tax rate stabilization and the cash to capital contribution, all you're doing is just pushing this down the road so that there's going to be a major increase to the tax resident, to the residents in one year's, two years, three years' time. I say we stay the course. Right now, the tax rate for next year is 1.9% plus the 1% cash to capital.
Any other comments, questions? Gallow.
Thank you. Could, could we just go through this concept of, I think it was, I figured it was somewhere around $5 million if we don't fund the 630 now. I'm not sure I understand that, that concept. This isn't proposing to not place whatever the amount is, we'll say 630,000 in the budget. It's, it's suggesting it's funded from a different source. There's no pressure for the next year other than to refund that 630,000 into the rate stabilization fund. So how, how does it work that, that we're, we're behind the ball if we don't, if, if we're following this methodology? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Winry Van Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to keep it to very simple numbers for an example. So for example, if we currently contributed $10 million to our capital reserves on an annual basis and our plan was to increase it by $1 million. And we decided that this year we were going to fund it from tax stabilization reserve. So that would be a one-time funding or a limited funding source because the following year, we wouldn't be using the tax stabilization reserve. So that funding from the tax stabilization reserve would then come out. Now that presents a tax pressure of that $1 million. But then we also planned another $1 million to make it up to 12 million for the following year in 2027 to be able to complete that 10-year plan because we'd be adding a million dollars essentially each year until we got to the 10th year where we have $20 million. But if we decide, okay, we're not going to increase our cash to capital in that sec, in the second year of the 10-year plan by one, by 2 million, we're just going to keep it at 1 million. We're 1 million short in the remaining nine years. So that's how it, it works. So it'd be roughly about 5.8 million or so that we'd be short. The 630,000 times nine would be what we'd be missing unless we did a catch up. So unless we actually did a 2% increase to catch up that 630,000 that we were, would be short in those other nine years.
Counselor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not entirely following. Why does it matter where, we're, we're funding the capital reserves equally? Why does it matter where that money comes from?
Ms. Winry Van Kessel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So when we fund from the tax levy, it goes into that base budget. And what we're doing is we're increasing that funding. And what we're doing is we're increasing that funding on an annual basis. When we fund from the tax stabilization reserve, that is a one-time or very limited uh funding strategy. So we can't fund it in every single of the 10 years of the plan from tax stabilization. That'd be six point three million. That would be planning to drain the, the entire reserve over that period of time. We would have to basically take that funding out, which is that reserve funding out at some point in time to maintain the reserve balances in capital to still have that same capital plan. If we don't do that, then that means we're not contributing as much to capital. Hope that helps.
So o- over a time period of whatever the next term or whatever it is, we can plan to, to refund that, whatever that amount is, ends up being six hundred and thirty, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. To what extent will it, it affect the budget? It's currently one percent. To what extent would it affect the other, if, if we were to plan to recover that over the next four or five years?
Swearing, right, Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So it depends on how long we want to take. If we wanted to add an extra point two five percent per year, we could do that, but we'd still have to pull more money out of tax stabilization for that period of time where we're missing that balance. So it would result in an increase essentially to the levy for that cash to capital component of the levy. But the other challenge is we do have some significant pressures for asset management overall with the asset management deficit. And then next term accounts, so we're going to start considering how we're going to manage those going forward as well. So it's just going to, it could end up contributing further to the asset management deficit unless we're willing to contribute more overall going forward.
Counselor.
Thank you. I'm, I'm still uh uh in favor of this. Um, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I hear more often than not um that people are, are struggling and this is one thing that we can do to, uh and I think it's, it's, it's being done in a responsible way um to, to help mitigate um residents and what they're going through today.
Yeah. Uh, I need a motion to extend. Counselor Gardner, Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? Or was that Carrie's? Counselor Reese, go ahead.
I'm in favor of this as well and for the reasons that Counselor Gallo suggested. Um, the unknowns are what's happening in um in the economic circumstances that we're in. And I think when I've spoken to other residents, there are concern about taxes and the continual increase in tax. And I think Counselor Gallo has come up with a, a pretty good resolution here. I mean, tax stabilization is there to stabilize our taxes and to our, and our tax levy, at least that's what I understand. And so I think it's a, a good use of that. So I appreciate the, uh, appreciate that. And our tax stabilization, and maybe it's through you too, uh, Ms. Wainwright Van Kessel, so other people know, our tax stabilization fund is built and based on um additional funds that we levy every year and it goes into the tax stabilization fund. And since uh twenty eighteen, that has grown thirty-six percent. So we still have room to uh to wiggle and to, and I, I have, I believe our senior staff has every capability in taking a look at the budget and being able to take things out of the budget yet not uh seriously affect our service standards. I have every confidence in that. So can you tell me a little bit about the, the increases in our, our uh tax stabilization over the last number of years and maybe it's just a matter of budgeting better? Through you.
Swearing, right, Van Kessel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the balances in the tax stabilization reserve still have that target balance of the 10% of the levy. So as the levy has increased, that target balance has increased. Um, if in, over the years, it was not necessarily always fully funded and it doesn't get funded directly through a line on the budget. The tax stabilization reserve, that gets funded through any surpluses the town may have. Anything above that target level ends up going to other reserves, which are capital asset management reserves that are tax funded. The, the, the challenge with the service levels is there are many services we have that are seeing inflationary impacts. And while we are seeing some savings in some areas, like savings from carbon tax on heating uh fuel and, and fuel for vehicles, we are seeing other pressures in other areas for contracted services, particularly in operations, which are coming in at much higher rates. So we're using some of these savings to offset some of these inflationary pressures we're seeing. To be able to actually maintain service levels and go to a zero percent tax increase, we would be looking at having to do things such as increase user fees for recreational services, possibly significantly, or looking at taking draws from tax stabilization reserve. But that is not a sustainable method, this tax stabilization reserve. You eventually have to come off of that and you have to increase the levy in the future. So a zero percent levy now, as we've seen in history and even through other municipalities during COVID years, means higher levy increases in the future.
Counselor.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that this is a sustainable uh plan and tactic anyway, and it's never been discussed that way. That is because of the circumstances that we find ourselves in with economy. And I think it's a reasonable thing that we show our taxpayers that we are under the same pressures as they are uh with respect to inflation and other costs, but we're doing our level best to try to reduce the tax levy to them to help them out. So I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Thompson, second time.
Thank you. I'm in full support of the comment that we should do everything we can to try and mitigate the budget increase, to look for ways to, to further reduce it. Absolutely. I just don't think, in my opinion, that promising a zero percent tax increase is, is fiscally responsible. And that's just my, my personal view. Um, but I, I guess I do have a question and i- if the chair will allow it towards Counselor Gallo. If this motion passes, is it also your intent that all of our community partners and Central York Fire also present a budget based on a zero percent increase?
Counselor.
I, I would look to everybody, uh including us, to um tighten their belts. I think that's what the public is, is, is looking for. Uh, so, yes.
Counselor.
That's up to them. I don't speak for them, but that's up to them. I can only control what we control.
Counselor.
Well, I mean, we can control it because we approve it, but, I mean, Central York in itself is a significant component of our, our, our budget. And so whatever they propose does have a significant impact. And if, if the goal is to get to zero percent, we would have to find the money somewhere. No different than wages and benefits. I think we're all aware that, I think combined wages and benefits are fifty percent of our overall budget, something like sixty million dollars. So even if you just take a two percent increase in wages and benefits, it means finding one point two million dollars in, in savings somehow. And it's a tall task when you take into consideration not just that, but inflation and everything else. Absolutely, we should do everything we can to kind of mitigate budgetary impact, but I don't think zero percent is sustainable.
Counselor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think a lot of the important points have been made, but I think a simple way to describe a, a one-time uh instance where we don't increase with inflation, it, it's not just a one-time impact, it impacts multiple years. Um, a zero percent property tax increase in year one will lower the base for subsequent years, so it'll have a long-lasting impact. And I think that's essentially, you know, what our treasurer is saying. And so it's not just a matter of, you know, we have six point four million dollars in our uh tax stabilization fund that we can insert there. We're behind the, the black ball for multiple years unless we play huge uh incremental uh or exponential catch up. And, you know, you know, just like any kind of uh budgeting, if you want to decrease revenues, you have to decrease expenditures, which means service. And as Counselor uh Thompson mentioned, whether it's uh Central York Fire, the library, the cultural center, um, they're going to be subjected to the, you know, the same uh zero percent because we're not going to have anything uh further to give them. So it, it will have a drastic impact on services. And that on, on a single detached property, you know, that uh their property taxes might increase two hundred and forty dollars a year, twenty dollars a month. Um, I suspect that the lack of service or less service that they receive will be more impactful to them than the twenty dollars or ten dollars or thirty dollars a month that uh they might be saving. Although I'm not, I'm not minimizing uh the financial impact that that could have on our household. But I suspect that the less service is going to be more impactful to them than the benefit of having um twenty-three dollars a month savings.
Counselor.
Thank you. Um, I'm just trying to wrap my head around where the conversation's going because it makes it seem like this motion is talking about going zero percent from now until the end of time. And I don't think that's really the intent of the motion here. I think it's just really focusing on twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, we've had several conversations around the table about um not giving increases in some areas, deferring uh DC charges, Bill seventeen, deferring uh DC charges on affordable housing. We're deferring all over the place because people are struggling. So whether it's got to do with DC or wages or staffing or servicing, it's just got to come from somewhere, but I don't think that the intent of this is long-term. And so I, I, I do understand that um what Counselor Gallo is suggesting is that, you know, well, maybe we don't spend so much money on ABC and this is like an opportunity to look and see where we can save some money on whether it's a project or, you know, let's not uh hire an extra staff member this year. Many, many people in the private sector right now, I've heard of many colleagues and friends that their jobs are lost. And a lot of it's high level because everybody's trying to cut the fat a little bit. And that job's not being replaced. In fact, that other people are being dispersed, all those responsibilities. And maybe it's time people need to pick up their socks and, and take on a little bit more. And I think that is, I think really the intent here with uh twenty twenty-six. I think we had another motion on the floor, Counselor Kim, that you were putting, that you were putting forward, that Bill seventeen is going to have royal assent if it hasn't already. Uh, all about deferring DC charges uh for all residential properties. Well, we'll be losing a lot of revenue upfront for that. So I don't think this is just isolated just to us and council. And I don't think it's really fair, Counselor Thompson, to be um waiving uh wages and, and salaries in front of people's faces because that's not fair either. And I have seen some stuff in emails on that and that's really in bad taste as well because at the end of the day, it's all going to come up to a head anyway. We all know that. So I find it very hypocritical that we talk about not having an increase in one place, but increase in other places. And I think we have to not make this political and just look at the fact that we're just trying to create some relief. And if there's a way to do it genuinely, then let's find that relief. I think there's some genuine sincerity to this. And that's how I want to look at this.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I, I would have no problem with this motion if it said, let's look at you know, doing the things that we continually do, which staff work very hard throughout the budget season to find efficiencies, to find savings. They do all that currently and we do it every year and we've been doing it for eight years. That's why we have one of the lot lowest tax rates in the entire GTA. It's not by accident. It's because staff, this council, all of us have worked hard to make sure that we provide the best service at the best price for our residents. So if this motion said, hey, let's continue to do the things that we're doing, let's try to find some extra efficiencies, let's try to find some extra savings to maybe get it a little bit lower than what we're anticipating, that two point nine, I could do that. Zero percent, we all know and we've seen it. And there's economists that even stated that it is fiscally irresponsible to have a zero percent increase. Because all you're doing is you're taking from Peter to pay Paul, and we all know Paul's going to come back the next year with interest. And the people that are going to foot the bill are the residents of our community. We've seen it happen here in the town of Aurora. The nineties, there were zeros. Counselor Gardner, you lived through it. You saw it. Coming on council, what happened? Nine percent increases, eight percent increases, the years that followed that zero percent. So it doesn't matter whether it's long-term or not. If it happens once, you have to double up the next year to get caught up. Because the money is not going to just magically come from somewhere. And until there is more increased funding, which what we're asking for from the provincial government and the federal governments to provide sustainable, predictable funding for municipalities, so therefore we do not need to continuously increase property taxes, that's how we can get to that zero. But without that predictable funding coming from the other levels, we can't do that because it's irresponsible to our residents, to the community and to the future of this town. And so I'll always take consideration into any thought that council wants to put forward in, in regards to the budget. Uh, I've had some conversations with a few of you already in regards to your wards and what you would like to see. Um, but I got to tell you, uh, if some are asking for a zero percent, well, then I guess that means that you don't want anything for your ward because I wouldn't be able to include it. We've been very responsible and we will continue for the twenty twenty-six budget, working with staff to make sure that we provide as low as possible a tax rate to make sure that we do not make a major impact to our residents. And we will continue that. Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh I wasn't here when it was zero percent.
No, you weren't. I apologize that you weren't here.
No, no, but I did feel the repercussions. But one of the reasons that um we had so much trouble was that we just kept spending money. We were, we were zero percent. But we weren't watching what we were doing with our money on the other side. Um, this motion is quite different. It is telling us that it's time to really pay attention to how we're spending money. And that includes consultants. And I know that every year we, this Wainwright Van Kessel does an awesome job with the budget and has been acknowledged for that by other than our council. But I think that there are still ways. And I believe that's what Counselor Gallo is talking about. There are ways that we can save money. And we gotta dig deep and think hard and do it because this is the time. And uh the zero percent for one year. Uh, I, I this was a hard decision for me, but I agree with doing this if the rest of the motion is carried forward. And so we hopefully will approve the motion. And um it won't be doom and gloom. It'll just be a breath of air for the residents. And that's what Counselor Gallo is looking for and I support that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, well, I'll get to that. Counselor Taylor, second time.
Thank you. Um, I, I just, I just want to ask you, Mr. Mayor, a question, you and what, some words that you shared. Are you suggesting uh that um if this were to pass today, that means that if there's any particular projects that need to be completed, whether it be, you know, the senior center or I don't know, at the SARC or anything like that, that if you were a ward councillor that did not, that voted in favor of zero percent, that you would just arbitrarily not put in a budget to fund any repairs that need to be done at the senior center just because we're looking for a one percent? Is this going to be a ward-based decision? Or is it going to be a decision on funding based on the actual project at hand? Because I was really confused by that comment.
I, I apologize if you're confused, Counselor, but that's not my, my intentions. And what I, I stated, what I stated is that some of you have provided me with, with uh requests for increased, uh whether it's from a capital or even from an operational side, uh increased cost to the twenty twenty-six budget to provide a certain operational uh, uh, you know, uh situations or capital. Uh, and what I'm suggesting is, is if you're, if you're asking for a zero percent, how can I in good conscience add those things that obviously you can't do within a zero percent. So you can't be asking on one hand for us to increase operational costs and then on the other hand saying uh we want a zero percent tax increase. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying it's beholden to any specific ward or any certain councillor. But if you're asking for an increase in one end, but then saying that you want to hold it to zero, it can't be feasibly, can't be possible to be done.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And that's what I wanted to hear, that this was not going to be a decision made on a council decision on a ward. Certainly, that wouldn't necessarily, that wouldn't be fair. I would just expect that just with anything, whether you are budgeting your own self. If you want to afford the brand new pair of shoes, you think about what do you have to do next month to save that to be able to afford it? And I think that's just generally what we're trying to be looking at for the year 2026. And not to be compromising certain things, but from what I'm reading on the motion here, it was essentially looking at temporary cost constrainments on certain things or how to phase or defer. But not necessarily saying we're not going to be going ahead with things. And where that would happen or how it would happen, I think will be based on how the budget's being presented. And at the end of the day, when this motion, if it does go forward, if, you know, you as a mayor have the sole discretion of, you know, coming back with, you know, something that's above 0%. I mean, at the end of the day, you have a strong mayor, so you're going to present it how you're going to present it. But at the end of the day, I think that what's being asked here is to bring something at 0% within the means that you believe is 0%.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I'll just wrap up by just saying I have no intention of reducing service levels to 2026. In 2026, my full intention through this budget is to make sure that our residents continue to have the best services at the best price. And we'll continue that because we're not going to do any shortcuts. We're just going to have results that work for our community and for our residents. Call vote. What would you like to split, councillor?
One and three together?
So one and three, and then two, four, and five. Okay, so we'll vote on one and three. All those in favor? On one and three. Post. That carries. Two, four, and five. All those in favor? Post. That carries. 15.4. Counselor Kim, do you want to move this? Thank you. Is there a secondary? Really, can we get it to where the therefore clause is? Please? Thank you. Is there a secondary? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Kim, go ahead.
More of a motion for receipt than anything else as Bill 27 has already been passed and staff is aware. And they will go through the process to implement the legislation once the regs are out. But I think of it as more of a receipt and, you know, something that's been on my radar for over a year in terms of try to get housing starts moving. And so I thought it'd be worthwhile to put this out there for communication and for awareness to all stakeholders and especially council. So, you know, council for many years has discussed various strategies on making homes more affordable as well as trying to get developers, large and small, to start construction of homes that council has already approved. And as mentioned in the motion, Aurora has 23 applications approved by council totaling 4,200 units. But building permits have yet to be submitted. More finished product will mean more units available for purchase or rent and potentially leading to more reasonably priced product. One of the main pain points for builders, preventing them from putting in building permit applications and therefore starting construction, is the heavy development charges that they have to pay upfront, which most have to finance at current rates, which can be as high as the mid-teens for construction financing at major banks and secondary institutions. Bill 17, the Protect Ontario by Building Faster and Smarter Act, received royal assent last Thursday. As some of you may know, part of the bill legislates that DC charges will be collected at the time of the property's closure as opposed to municipalities collect the amount at the time of the building permit application. Now, while Bill 17 already mandates the deferral of development charges until the date of property transfer, this motion is intended to formally acknowledge and direct staff to operationalize this change. It ensures council is aligned on the timing, communication, and procedural impacts of implementation. This also provides an opportunity to inform developers and property owners. As some may not even be aware that this, 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 that this deferral is now in effect. Given that Bill 17 would defer collecting DCs from anywhere from 12 to 24 months for, say, low-rise developments as an illustration, it would be important for staff and council to have dialogue on how this would impact our DC funding strategy along with our capital initiatives. This can be a deep and complex topic that can't be known in one discussion, but perhaps council can receive a staff report once all the regulations have been confirmed and there has been dialogue with the region on how we can smoothly administer this process. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. If you're okay with it, I wanted to direct it to Counselor Kim, just get some clarification on his, the last clause when he talks about the changes to the legislation coming to effect. As he mentioned, yes, Bill 17 has passed and got royal assent, but the regulations aren't out yet. And so we don't really know the, I guess, the details. And I guess there's always a possibility that some of the regs or the details may change between now and whenever they're released. So when he says that he wants us to comply and make these changes, it was projected when the legislation comes into effect. Is the implying that he's waiting until the regulations come out and we know the details? Or is he looking to make the changes right now because it has royal assent?
Counselor Kim?
Because if I can say, just my preference is to wait until the regs come out.
I believe Counselor Kim is asking to wait for the, like, the regs, but hold on a minute. Counselor Kim?
Counselor Thompson, that's my sentiment and that's my, it's not really instruction, but that's my intent, is that staff wait for the regulations to come out so we know all the details.
Councillor?
Then I take from this, then all we're going to do at that point in time is align with provincial legislation. Yep, thank you.
Counselor Gallo?
Thank you. This is an information item. There's really no necessity for any direction from council to staff. To be honest, what I would have preferred is a motion directing staff to, and I think I heard about it in the last part of Counselor Kim's speech there, was to, what are the ramifications of this? And to ask staff to report to us as quickly as they can, to the extent that they can, so that we can better understand what the financial ramifications are of this. This is, to me, that's the motion that should be before us. This is moot. This is going to happen. We have no choice. But we can plan and we can ask staff to report back to us and ask us, you know, what their vision is planned to mitigate this. Some projects are four and five years, larger projects are four and five years that we would have normally received those funds, expected to receive those funds and collected interest or used them, and we won't anymore. So we need to establish a plan. And I don't know if that's through you, Mr. Mayor, in staff's radar. But to me, that's what should be before us.
I believe it has come from Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We were already planning a report back relating to some of the DC changes that the region was considering. Some of them were similar to this. As part of that report back, we're also planning on addressing these changes to legislation. And we are currently working on a new DC revenue forecast that would consider the delays in the cash flow for receiving funds for the residential developments. And we wanted to make sure that's included in this report that's planned for September. And that way, council has it in advance of when the budget comes forward because it is going to have impacts on growth-funded projects, particularly in those service areas where we are already in a negative DC balance. So one of those areas in particular being parks and recreation. We would have to consider options such as deferral of projects or financing projects.
Counselor?
Thank you. And that's what I was going to ask when it was projected of September. I look forward to seeing that report. Well, I don't really look forward to seeing that report, but it's a necessity.
Counselor Gallo?
Thank you. I had some similar questions about that. Also, just, you know, the motion itself through Mr. Mayor and Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel. Regardless of this motion, would staff be following the procedures of the provincial government?
Ms. Mayor, before I go there, I need another extension. Counselor, and I need time. What, five minutes? Ten minutes. Counselor Gallo, Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? Post. That carries. Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We were already starting to work on this and having discussions with our DC consultant to figure out what their interpretation of this is for.
Councillor?
Great, thank you. I mean, I appreciate Counselor Kim for being passionate about this over the last year. However, I just feel like this motion is moot. Staff are already working on it. Once it does pass legislation, gets that royal assent, obviously nature will take its course. I don't see the sense of voting on a motion per se on something that we're already doing. And I quite frankly, didn't understand the urgency of getting on the agenda today based on the fact that this is something that's going to follow just the nature of the procedure that we follow already.
Counselor Kim, second time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I just want to thank council colleagues for allowing me to present this, even though it's mute and it's kind of pointless. But when I read the bill, I was pretty giddy and I just really wanted to talk about it amongst my colleagues. And, you know, in speaking with staff prior, I knew that a report was going to be coming to us, but I just wanted to make all of you guys aware. And one of the questions through you, Mr. Mayor, that I wanted to ask the treasurer is, now that it's legislated, but the operational and administrative aspect has not been implemented yet because we don't know the regs. Can you clarify for council, what would happen if one of the builders who council has approved on their property for construction comes with a permit, say, tomorrow? What would happen? How would we proceed with that?
Ms. Mayor, Van Kessel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's why we are doing a lot of consulting with the region and also with our development charge consultant to determine what the interpretation is. Because there's a couple of interpretations out there as to is it when it receives royal assent? Or is it when the minister takes action through the regulations? And how does that all work? So we are still working on figuring that piece out.
Councillor?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So what we would do is tell the builder, ABC, that we will not collect the DCs right now, but hold on and wait for more information in terms of what will happen?
Ms. Mayor, Van Kessel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I'd do is put some more pressure on my consultant to give me that interpretation to figure out what we need to do. I wouldn't want to make any rush assumptions on that.
Councillor?
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Let's add, we know the devil's in the details and so we do need to wait for the regulations to come out. And we anticipate with the quick pace that this provincial government moves at, that we'll probably see them sooner rather than later. So I think staff will have a good understanding once those regulations come out. I know the region has implemented essentially somewhat of a similar thing immediately. So it is in place as far as deferral of DCs to occupancy. But that's only for mid-rise and high-rise. They've done two building permits for ground-related developments. But that will change as well, obviously, because we need to follow provincial legislation. But the region is also waiting to get those regulations before we make any necessary changes as well. So I think we're all kind of just waiting for that. And once we get it, I'm looking forward to seeing the report from Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel as far as the impacts that it will have to our community as we move forward and look at the initiatives that we're trying to continue to create positive growth in our community. So. All vote. All those in favor? Post. That carries. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor. I'm sorry. It's 11.5. Cut me some slack. Do you want to say something under new business? We're just passing it the way it was. New business? Counselor Reese?
We've had recent meetings with Metrolinks and the Construction Liaison Committee. And there's significant anxiety around the double track, the impact that's going to have on traffic and traffic flow. And although Metrolinks is committed to having a traffic assessment and provide those with us. And of course, this is still because we don't know what the, whether there will or will not be a grade separation. I'm wondering if it makes sense now for us to get started on our preliminary traffic studies around that so that we have some information for people who are highly anxious about this, particularly those who travel across Wellington Street, up and down Centre Street and Industrial Parkway. So through you too, perhaps Mr. Ramuno on that. I don't know if there's a possibility to put that on our radar sooner than later.
Sure. Mr. Ramuno, do we have a timeline? Has Metrolinks confirmed the timeline to us?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, but our understanding is that they committed to conducting a traffic study for Wellington vis a vis the future double tracking. So we can follow up tomorrow morning and see when the, when the projected completion of that, that work will be available.
Sir Ramo, can you follow up? And then if you can provide council with maybe a little, little memo on what, or even provide it during council?
Will do.
Thank you.
Thanks. That'd be perfect. The other thing that came up, timing again, is the traffic calming warrants. And I think I got the information that I need about these warrants. But I'm hoping that we can take a look at the warrants and have them updated or amended and have that come back to us. So I guess that comes through you, Mr. Ramuno. Again, I'd like to see if there's a possibility you can put some effort into that or if we can have some conversation about that offline to see what solutions we can have for some of these smaller streets that don't have the volume and so they don't pass the warrants. But they still have safety issues that they need to address. So if you want to take that offline, I'll be happy to do it. But I think there's some work that needs to be done there.
I see, Mr. Ramuno, nodding aside. I'm just going to remind council, I'm going to call for a German at 11:10. So we can get through as quickly as possible.
I'm done with mine.
Thank you. Counselor Gallo, new business?
Yeah, I do have some new business, but just question with the last item, did we have a vote? I didn't vote for the last one. I don't even know who voted, what the outcome was.
I called for a vote and there was more than four hands up for in favor, so.
Okay, I wasn't even paying attention. Okay. A couple delegates were here about Bill 5 and Bill 17. And I just wondered, Mr. Mayor, were you planning on writing any letters of opposition to these bills and supporting some of that?
Well, councillor, I will tell you, I'll speak to my colleagues. I'll speak to Mayor Taylor and my other colleagues. I know that a lot of the mayors, whether they've sent a letter or have just sent some concerns. I can tell you that Mayor Taylor sent a letter to the province outlining concerns, not opposition. Concerns. It states right here. And I agree with his sentiment that the bills are complicated. They're massive bills. They have a lot. There's a lot of good stuff in it. And there's some stuff that there's some concerns. So to relay those concerns, absolutely. I have no problem relaying those concerns, but the turnout, I can tell you, even Mayor Taylor says that he disagrees with outright opposition at this point in time because he would like to have an understanding of what. And I think I'm hearing that from most of my colleagues, is we would like to have an understanding. So I'll continue to talk to staff to get a full scope of both those bills. And I have no problem relaying concerns that I have or that we, that I feel that are important to the municipality, to the province.
I appreciate that. And I understand opposing the entire thing would be ill-informed of us to make a blanket statement. ill-informed of us to make a blanket statement on the entire bill. I'm sure there's some good components to it with some good intent, but I think it's safe to say that there are some things about it that are concerning. And I would love the fact that, you know, as a council, that we do also express that we have some concerns, that we'd like some more consultation about that before these bills are passed.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a German. I got one thing that I have to do before we call. You guys want to extend for new business and, and PSA is sure. Yeah, five minutes. Counselor Gardner, second. Counselor Gallo, all those in favor? Post. That carries. Go ahead, Counselor Gardner.
So I was going to speak about Bill Five as well and where, perhaps staff could have a look at it and will it come back to council for comments before you send any information?
I mean, I, I think we can ask staff to provide a report on, on Bill Five and Bill Seventeen and give us, you know, a little bit of an extent of what they, you know, what, what they entail inside the bills, a hundred percent. I think we would get that regardless.
Well, I'm thinking timing is important.
I mean, we're not. Both bills are passed.
I know, yeah.
They've reached, they've reached royal assent.
But especially with respect to the environment and, you know, could it be soon?
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure staff will probably say the same as they just said about the DCs, which is part of one of the bills, is that, that the regs still haven't come out on both of them.
No, of course.
And so there's, there's, and, and I think this is the, the issue. And I think this is why some, I've heard from some of my colleagues is that we don't have all the details. We, we understand the high level of what the bills are, are suggesting of implementing, but they haven't provided the details of, of what they're actually going to be enacting. And so we need to know those details before we actually come out and say whether we're in favor or opposed or whether we have concerns.
Okay, Bill Five might be a little different because it's an environmental issue. So the answer is to my non-question.
Well, I'm sure staff will try to get us, get us a report once they have full, full enough information to provide a report on those two bills.
And who's going to do it on Bill Five?
I think it's a combination of, of a few people because the bills, the bills fall within finance, within operations, within, within planning, development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's long system. Thank you in advance.
Counselor Thompson? Counselor Gallo?
Just quickly in terms of, of Metro Links, there was a report out today, whether it's true or not, but how Metro Links plans to deliver European-style train services went off the rails. So I don't know how that, if we can analyze that, if we're producing a report, you know, it may be moot in terms of any traffic issues. If we don't know exactly what, what has been halted, what is going to continue. But I think we should, we should get up to speed as, as soon as we can.
Counselor Kim, new business? Counselor Gardner, you have something else?
At the, they are not going to do the double track over the bridge on Wellington on a young. They're going to do like a lay-by, like in the old days. So that's certainly going to be helpful with the, the, the traffic and disruption.
Not sure about that.
We're not sure about that? Oh, I.
There's a lot of rumors out there about what's going, what's going on with Metro Links, but well, we, I've sat down with the CEO and our CEO went down there with me and we had a discussion with them. And so they're, they're working. They, they have concerns, but they're, they're, they're working diligently to provide us with an answer at some point on how they're going to move forward, especially with the, the great separation on Wellington and as well as any other issues within the town of Aurora. So, absolutely. We have thirty seconds. I need to get this one in. So May twenty seventh, council appointed a citizen member to the Aurora Public Library Board to fill a vacancy. We would like to congratulate Terry Watman. Welcome to the board, Terry. And with that, I'll call for an adjournment. You want a quick one? Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Gallo. I, I get twenty seconds.
That's actually not so broken. June fourteenth, Aurora Soccer Club for Italian Heritage Month has a game and some fun. Film screening on June sixteenth from six to eight at the, at the, I believe it's at the the theater, the, the Cineplex. And then Autore and Amaretto on June nineteenth from six to eight at the Royal Rose Gallery. And a big thanks to, to the Royal Rose and Anna for all her work.
I got all of this, but I'm not going to say it. So I'll, I'll leave everyone with this. Last thing, Town Square tomorrow, Andrew Nemhart, Indiana Pacers, eight thirty. Let's cheer on our hometown NBA star. Call for adjournment. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Reese? All those in favor? Post.